Hi, good afternoon. We're gonna go ahead and get our work session started today. We have several things we want to get to on today's agenda. First thing we're gonna do is just kinda carry over the discussion around equity and maybe another item or two from our retreat. Seems like it was so long ago, but it was just a few days ago that we met on Friday and heard from the superintendent and the team around the theory of action, MPS redesign, and several other things that we said we wanted to give attention. So today, we're gonna start with the equity report, and then we have several other items. We'll end with matters of the board. So with that, I think we should go ahead and get started unless anyone has anything they'd like to recommend that we consider as far as the current agenda. So, hearing none, Dr. Boone will proceed with the update on the equity report and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan, members of the board. Good afternoon. As Mr. Jordan just set the stage, the equity report discussion was one that we carried over from Friday's mini-retreat where we had a very dynamic discussion about several key agenda items and felt that that was very good discussion and we have a lot of information as a governance team to use as we go forward. Today, Dr. Bailey is going to pick up with the equity report information, walk us through that, and then we can have similar discussions like we did on Friday about the items. Dr. Bailey?
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, members of the board. Equity report was derived from the policy that you all put in place, I believe, a couple of years ago. And what I've tried to do is to outline the purpose of this report, and I think ultimately the purpose of this report is to improve student achievement for all students, particularly our subgroups. So, in general, I wanted to pull a few things from the equity report, just highlighting what each of the goals were. There were eight goals, looking at various things: student enrollment, highly qualified and highly effective teachers, equitable distribution of teacher experience among our schools, staffing standards, parent-teacher association at each school, mobile units for classrooms, construction and renovation of facilities, and equitable distribution of resources and opportunities. And I believe that each of these goals are something that the policy would like for the district to review on an annual basis in support of a committee. So, I pulled together an equity report which each of you have a copy of, and hopefully you have the most recent copy that includes our teacher retention data. And that's the only piece that we updated from last Friday. And in those reports, we have it by each school, and we try to follow this guideline of information for each school. Student achievement, which is our SOLs, student enrollment, which we pulled from September 30th, student suspensions and discipline, federal funding, grant and other funding, which we pulled from our budget book. Highly qualified and highly effective teachers. I don't feel that the district has defined those two measures, so that's a work in progress. Experience of teacher levels, I mean, experience of teachers, which we'll pull from HR. Teacher retention, HR, and building utilization, number of portable classrooms. And so what we did for those two, we provided the utilization percentage, as well as how many mobile units or classroom a school may have. I don't know if you had a chance to look through all of the reports, but we tried to use the same format for each level in providing subgroup information where it was requested. And so at this time, I wanted to somewhat facilitate a discussion among you to get your opinion of the report and how might you plan for us to use it.
Let me chime back in just for a second. So, one of the things that we've talked about as a board, and we know is the best practice for school board governance is, you know, making decisions with good data. And so oftentimes, you know, there's a lot of things out there in terms of perception that we deal with or that people think is one way or another. And so when Norfolk became the second school division in the Commonwealth to pass an equity policy, the goal was for us to be able to have the data in front of us that allowed us to marry the data in these categories and other categories with the work of the theory of action and the strategic efforts there. And to be able to have some conversations about how do we invest, how do we provide supports, you know, all of this ties to academic achievement. One thing I would just, you know, caution us is because we've been so committed to discussing data like this and making the data available, anyone can pick up a document and pull out different pieces and note that there are disparities. I know I looked at it, and I did. You know, the question and the conversation, the work that we're trying to do as a team is get an understanding of what the data are telling us and how do we then align it with the work that we have on the table and future work, future work to come. So, I always say that because, you know, this is, these are public documents. We've been intentional about them being public documents, but just be aware that you can pick up any of these reports and find much of what we already know. And so as we work through this and as we reengage the equity task force to work through this and look at recommendations and how it aligns with our educational planning, there's no reason for us to shy away from the data, but I think it gives us a good starting point for the policy discussions and other strategic discussions that we know we're having today and gonna have to continue to have in the future. So, just wanna put that out there 'cause all of us are gonna get questions about it when, you know, as people review it.
And in support of the board, we will be looking to provide you with a glossary of terms, which, as we have stayed at September 30th, you know, everyone in the administration knows what that is, but that's when we collect our ADM at the beginning of the school year, and we use that particular measure for planning. Long-term suspensions, which number did we pull and what that means. Student attendance, is that from the whole year, three-quarters of the year when we have to report it? So, we're trying to make sure that we have multiple documents that reference the same numbers, and we wanna make sure that all of our numbers are the same on every document. So when you look at your school board accountability plan and the accompanying dashboard in our electronic dashboard, you'll have the same set of numbers. And so in those platforms, we have it spelled out by subgroups as well.
And if I could, to your comments, Mr. Jordan, also add a point of commentary that some of the differences are there by design. For example, when you think about a Title I school, even though we have a lot of Title I schools, the theory behind Title I schools is that you put additional resources, human, fiscal, materials, other things, into a building in order to address a particular need, a particular set of gaps. So when you see a school that has above and beyond some other schools, some of that is intentional based on the demographic, and so that's the first line of how do we hopefully begin to address some equity issues. And so often, the commentary would be, well, guess who doesn't have, rather than why others have. And so I don't want us to lose perspective of that either.
I also think it's important, as we, you know, deal with our legislative agenda, we know that there's conversations that are statewide, nationwide, district-wide, dealing with teacher retention, looking at the suspension rates and so forth. So having this information in front of us puts us in a position to be proactive in some of the policies and actions that we feel are necessary, rather than having, you know, it's easy to go on online sites and pull data and pull information without context, but I think at least for us, it allows us to see this data, discuss it in some context, and even as we have ongoing discussions, be able to have a point of reference for us to measure and track, track our progress.
It helps tell a significant story, and the, you know, the work that the governance team and the district have to face and that we have to address is what are the areas that absolutely need attention, and what are those areas that progress is what we need to see, but not necessarily changing what was in place? And so there's a lot of conversation around this. I look at the staffing levels, for example. You all know that particularly at the elementary level and all levels, we, at a minimum, meet the standards of quality, the SOQ staffing requirements, number of teachers per number of students. At the elementary level, we participate in the kindergarten through third grade class-size initiative, and so we have actual body counts in classrooms that we can't exceed certain numbers or we lose funding, additional funding for those classes. So sometimes, those are the pieces that the public may not be fully aware of in terms of how we make certain decisions about how many students in the classroom. That is also impacted by the demographics of the school, the free and reduced lunch. And so there are a number of layers within those standards of quality that drive our first set of practices. But you will recall last fall when we were addressing school opening, and we talked about the fact that using that as our first cut of what staffing should be like, then we start looking through the equity lens, what does the school need? And so we had a handful of schools or a handful of positions that normally would have far exceeded what the SOQ requirements are, but because of the needs of that particular school or the work that they were focused on, we made a decision to keep positions there, not just do that numerical slice and dice. And so those are the pieces of the equity conversation that won't be transparent in these documents, per se, but that's the mindset of how we then go into thinking about staffing and not just stopping at the SOQ-funded positions.
Are we in discussion mode?
Yes, yes.
Before we, could I just ask one clarification on the, on the report and then anything anybody like to discuss? The percentage, suspensions and the percentage number. Can you explain what, what that's telling us?
The long-term suspensions.
Well, just suspensions in?
Suspensions in general.
Where it has a percentage and suspension, that is the percentage of suspensions against the total enrollment of the school, or is, I mean, is that what it is?
Total enrollment of the school, and the suspension is just one up to 10-day, and then long-term is separate.
So if you look at the, the rows that are in there, percent of students with no incidents, that's an important piece. That means we've looked into the school's data for all suspensions, how many children, what percentage of children did not have a suspendable offense. So that's that number. The second number is, as Dr. Bailey was saying, suspensions that are 11-plus days and what those look like and what those numbers. Suspensions in general, when you say 5.6%, means 5.6% of that school population, because when you look at that with the percent of students with no incidents, that's that unduplicated count, if you will. So we're looking at individuals, not individual infractions and how many suspension days. And then, of course, the fourth area in there is, is the impact of student attendance, which as we know will, has been adopted as one of the school accreditation indicators going forward.
So, I just, I don't know, get some clarification. So, the, the suspension versus the percent of students, the suspension could be duplicated. Is that what you were saying?
No, these numbers in this document are unduplicated.
Are unduplicated.
So they take, took the total number of students and how many students did not have any suspensions and how many students had. It could be one suspension, it could be 15 suspensions, but they only counted ones.
Ms. Bassin?
I don't know if you're ready to have this discussion, but so it's, it was interesting to me to see an increase in suspensions going up in our elementary students, and as you would expect, those schools that have a higher number of suspensions also have a lower teacher retention rate. But do we know in terms of types of incidents, what we're seeing? Like is there, or is there a change in policy or practice that's resulting in the increase in suspensions, not long-term suspensions, but just suspensions in some of our schools?
Just for clarity, are you speaking globally or are you on a particular?
Well, I've noticed, I've noticed it in several elementary schools in particular, so I don't wanna list them out, but you know.
So you're saying at some of the schools you've noticed that?
There seems to be a trend, because there's several elementary schools where you see that over the three-year period, that it's going up. So I'm wondering if there's a change in our practices or a resource that is resulting in the increase in suspension?
Okay, I think it's, it's reflective of a number of things. It's reflective of sometimes the number of long-term substitutes that we have in a building and their level of experience in working with student behaviors. It is also reflective of where we see increased student actions that violate the code of student conduct. Most of those tend to be the, the general pieces, and we aren't seeing this, this escalation in extreme violence or anything like that, that's not it. But we're seeing those acting-out behaviors, those fighting. Those are the types of things that we tend to see most at the elementary level. We also know that behavior is sometimes a reflection of frustration with the academic environment, and that's why it's important that we have strong teaching and learning practices in a school so that a student can find their place and can feel supported in that. And I think the, the, so there, there has been no policy or practice change in this. It's where we too have been concerned. That was part of our alternative ed review. We asked them to look at what our elementary needs are, and you will recall, we addressed whether or not the ACES program that we have at Crossroads is adequate, given what we're seeing as escalating pattern of younger children having more, more significant infractions. It's something that we're seeing across the board, and it's one of the reasons we've often talked about, even with the General Assembly, with the legislature. Today, Delegate Dicky Bell's bill to prohibit suspensions pre-K3 was passed by indefinitely. And that's a good thing, because unless the General Assembly is going to give us tools to help support the behavioral needs of our students that are coming in, then you, suspension in the, it shouldn't be the panacea, but it certainly gives us space between the incident and the child's behavior and what we need to do to put a plan in place for the child's support. But if we don't have resources to be able to put a plan in place, then we struggle with what do we do for those? You'll see something that I have put forth in the budget just to address some behavioral concerns of students when that's presented, just for these reasons. And so my message to members of the legislature has been very clear. And we agree that suspension shouldn't be the first tool, but you cannot take our only tool and not give us resources for mental health counselors, pay for some alternative ed. We received some state funding to support secondary alternative ed, but we don't receive anything at the elementary level. And alternative ed shouldn't be a lifelong placement. It should be where we go to perhaps if a student's behaviors are so significant that we can get in there and then give them, work with them in an intensive way so we can get behavioral changes. I remember Ms. Wagner asking, what was a very poignant question back in discussions when we talked about congressional funding around Medicaid and if what would happen to those therapeutic day providers that are providing support for students in some of our schools? And I said, they would go away because we wouldn't have the resources. So Medicaid is funding that level of support, and that's what we need the state to step up. We all agree suspension numbers are a problem, but we also need the, the other part of the sentence with that.
Okay. So, are children that are in, in-school suspension reflected in this suspension number? So?
I would have to double-check that, because that's a technical type of question of how we pulled the data.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if in-school suspension, if, I think it's separated from out-of-school suspension, which would be one or two, three-day.
Okay, 'cause I just noticed the, from the year, I believe, that might have been when in-school suspension also kind of phased out, so you know.
That's what, the other thing I was gonna say, that's a tool that, you know, we've been trying to bring back in some form or fashion so that we can work with students in school and not just out of school, but you know.
Yeah, so I, I would, I would be interested in if you have the ability to tease that out.
Tease that out, yeah. And so I will say that this is a very powerful document and that it has a lot of information. However, it doesn't cover everything we do in the district, and it requires, or it will foster research-type questions that you have to cause us to have to go back and readdress the data. And looking at increase, certainly in my mind, if there's an increase in suspensions, I might also look at, is there a decrease in enrollment, which could also cause the data to be reflected differently, you know, when you calculate it.
This one, that's okay.
Ms. Wagner?
Look at the percentages.
Looking at equity and disperse of teachers, 'cause I remember initially there, it seems like the focus and schools and the priority schools had more, well, they, the teacher retention was not good. So, in terms of equity, 'cause I know in the beginning of schools, it's always those schools that have the most amount of long-term subs or whatever. Are we being equitable in terms of how we disperse teachers throughout the schools? Saying that maybe some of them were seasoned teachers, may possibly go into some of the priority or focus schools and vice versa? What are we doing in terms of that and how are we looking in terms of dispersment of teachers and being equitable?
You'll recall, that's been an ongoing conversation we've had with the board, and as an administrative team, we've started looking at what are our options around hiring veteran teachers into some of our most challenged schools academically? And that's why, back this fall, when we looked at our sta, some of the staffing, as we do the personnel documents, we've been excited at the beginning of the year, how many veteran teachers we were able to hire in Norfolk, and this year, we weren't just hiring novice teachers. So that was the good news. Of course, as you go through the year and you have to hire teachers, mostly novice teachers are the ones that are available. We have started looking at what are the incentives, do we want to recommend to the board a system of incentives to attract veteran teachers into some of these classrooms? If it was a buyer's market, we could get, and meaning that there were a lot of teachers available, we could do that and, and place teachers there very, very easily without incentives. But because there's such a teacher shortage, and you know, as I shared, region two, the elementary teacher shortage is our biggest shortage in this region, it's a seller's market, and they shop schools. So even when they've been interviewed, and we have principals and their teams out at these job fairs and things, and they're interviewing, and you may have several schools request the, an applicant based on the interviews and the conversations, it becomes that, that applicant's pick of where they would want to go if they are requested in multiple places. So that's why we're beginning those conversations, I have begun those conversations, are there ways that we can incentivize teachers selecting our priority and focus schools?
So, I have, I have two questions. I do have a suspension question, but while we're on the...
I just wanna follow up if there's any continued discussion on what Ms. Wagner had raised before we go to something different.
Yeah, I still have a question about what she's...
I guess part, the, the other part of that question is, and I understand with new people coming in that, you know, they, they, you know, they pick of the litter or sometimes they move. But sometimes, how about some of the veteran teachers that are already in the system and have been here for a while? Once we look at that pool, especially in the beginning, are we looking at maybe doing some school exchange or whatever to some of those schools that may need that kind of strength in teaching and learning?
That's that incentive piece. So we aren't just talking about incentives of who we hire, but incentives to attract teachers from where they may be to move to a priority or focus school.
Okay, 'cause, and so I guess my question is, if there, if we approach them, then they will say, I'm leaving if I have to move?
Yes, we have had teachers to tell us that.
But just to that point, one of the reasons that we have the information and why we have the policy, I mean, that's something that we can talk about in, in consultation with the administration. It's hard to just look at it in pieces, but you know, to me, as you point out, the particular schools that have the challenges with retention, I mean, that's not surprising. I mean, it's the, it, to me, when I look at it in the whole, it fits with the, the national data, and it kind of affirms the work that we've been moving towards. You look at the schools where the, the challenge in the neighborhood is hard, harder, more concentration of poverty, more, less access to resources that then feeds into the school. We have these challenges, and so for us as a board and a governance team, this is an opportunity for us to look at the data and for us to determine, are there some policies we want to consider and do they make sense against, you know, what the, what the realities are? But that's why I'm glad we have the data, 'cause it allows us to have these, have these discussions.
I would also add that some of what we're doing is partnering schools together so that your veteran teachers who have shown success among students academically can support our younger teachers or teachers new to the profession and help them by modeling and coaching. And we learned a little bit about that today at our ILT meeting, but we are doing some of that as well.
Dr. Robinson, were you gonna?
Instead of just moving teachers?
Jump in on that?
Yeah, so if you're looking at the data, and I understand why more challenged schools have a lot of younger teachers and a lot more turnover, what I guess, part of that data would be if we hire somebody that's experienced, do they, are they retained any longer than somebody fresh out of school? That would be a, a question to ask, 'cause I don't think it's necessarily a length of time that someone's involved in a teaching. It's just having teach, taught, taught, teach, taught in a, in a challenged school, it's a, it's a much different, much different environment and very difficult for a lot of people to work in. So I'm just, I think that would be good data to look at also, not just the number of teachers that we lose, but what, where were their, their years of experience prior to coming to the district?
Yeah, and I just think it goes back to why we were trying to get this definition of highly effective.
Right.
Because just the, you know, having a seasoned teacher in one environment that seemingly is producing results doesn't necessarily mean that that same teacher can produce in another and vice versa. So I think we have to be able to drive down, but the research is clear that where students are able to have two or three successful, positive learning environments in a row, what the results are and what happens when you do not. And so we know that right now, the schools that we have the greatest challenges, and frankly, in many cases have been challenged for 30 years, you know, to me, this affirms that we must pay attention... You know, to me, this affirms that we must pay attention to this and we have to take some action, you know, to, to do something different. So, Ms. Basine.
So along those lines, my question, comment was related to what Dr. Robinson just asked. Cause we make the assumption that veteran equals more effective or higher quality, which may or may not be the case. So I think looking at it in terms of, I know with a brand-new teacher, it'd be difficult to look at, like, performance evaluations. Like, do our more challenged environments have a higher percentage of teachers with higher performance evaluations versus lower performance evaluations? I think, I think looking at it in terms of high-performing teachers versus low-performing teachers versus veteran versus new is some, is a different way to look at it. And then also looking at it in terms of cultural competence, you know, because you could have a veteran teacher, as you just said, in one environment that, that environment may not be the best fit for that particular teacher.
Right, well, we're finding, you know, certainly these are great research questions. And, you know, I, I would love to kind of get, get in and manipulate the data to inform our questions. And looking at teachers and looking at who's considered highly effective, what we have found anecdotally and in some cases statistically significant that some new teachers have been highly successful. However, you want to see if that is a trend and not something that just happened that year. You know, in that set of students, are they effective at least three years? And I think research says if you, something happens three years in a row, then it becomes a trend to determine how effective a new teacher is. And so we have found some teachers to be highly successful as evidence of our SOL performance. And then we have found some veteran teachers who may have been, have, may have articulated high performance out of students years ago, but not the same this year and not sure what may have happened to cause that. So there's a lot of different ways to manipulate the data to inform us. And so where do we start? Certainly, this is a great starting point. And looking at data in isolation only tells us one thing. So if we marry it together, like what you have been saying or asking, and Ms. Wagner as well, informs us even further. So we, we hope to get to some of that.
Yeah, it's something you gotta.
Well, I mean, I, I'm gonna shift gears, but if somebody else was on that, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think Tanya had a.
I, I had another question, so back to the suspension.
Oh, to the suspensions, okay.
So I, I would be interested to see if, who is it that we're suspending? Are we seeing more students with IEPs or 504s too? That's, I think, something.
Don't forget, that's in your accountability plan.
Right, that is, that's why I'm asking, yeah.
But I'm saying, we, that's something we're already populating.
Right.
You remember in the accountability plan, the breakdown of suspension by subgroups is there.
Right, but I think when we get an equity report.
So here's a technical question for the body. We, we are finding ourselves in perhaps redundant reporting because we have some things one place. So at some point, the next time we have a mini-retreat or, or governance conversation, if we can kind of decide because, yeah, we're maintaining a lot of major reports and we need to figure out.
Right, I agree with you.
Yeah, and so that's why, you know, not pushing back on the questions when I say that's in the accountability report, but that is where some of this information is. And we've got to figure out, how do we crosswalk or at least remind ourselves that the data in multiple places?
Right.
And we need to check multiple places. So just for, for future planning.
And that's why I asked that question because, you know, the, the first version, the 1.0 of the accountability plan was developed with, that we all reviewed and developed with the idea of looking at it through an equity lens. So I think the merge, like the equity report and accountability plan should have, it should be synergistic. You know, it should be one where we're tackling all, all of that in one place.
Right.
Right.
And they are, and it will be. I mean, just, just as a reminder, you know, as was mentioned earlier, we, we passed the equity policy. We were in the midst of transition during the time that we passed the equity policy. We've been working on the accountability plan, which would give us some areas that we would give focus and attention. Because you, in this document, there are, you know, 100 different areas where you could drill down. So the accountability plan gave us an opportunity to give some attention and focus. As we have discussed the accountability plan, questions would come up, well, can I get school-by-school data on X? So what you have in the report before you is some of that school-by-school data. And so, you know, part of what I think we have to be able to do is, you know, digest what we have in front of us in terms of the school-by-school data, continue to give attention to what we've identified in the accountability plan as a priority attention area. But at the same time, as Dr. Boone just said, then begin to meld those things to, together. I mean, we did this because we do get all these multiple reports. This was a way to try to put it all together in one place and to be able to inform our decision-making and discussion going forward. I guess for me, you know, we could sit here for the next 20 minutes and ask multiple questions of Dr. Bailey and Dr. Boone. What I'm trying to get a sense of from a board perspective, you know, what's your sense of the information that we have? Not necessarily right now, how do we, you know, give more when I don't think we've really had an opportunity to digest all that we have. But are you feeling a sense of, I don't know if comfort is the right word, but at least.
Or being on target.
Being on, being on target. Are there things in it that are surprising to you? Are there, is there something that's glowingly missing? Because just as a reminder, in the, in the po, policy itself, it says, "The school board recognizes that the concept of educational equity is not the same as equality. Equity refers to fostering a barrier-free environment whereby all students, regardless of background, have the opportunity to benefit from the establishment of high standards and the provision of support, effective learning environments and resources required for a high-quality education." So this data is just helping us to assess where we are and to inform decision-making moving forward to how we get to the place that we say we want to, want to get to. Dr. Gabriel?
Could I agree with you more about using this as the information to get to where we want to get? And it's a very extensive document. And while there were items that I could definitely say, yep, that validates what my thoughts were, there, there are some items in here that are, that are interesting to see. But going back to the question that you raised earlier about the teachers and where we take this conversation with what the information is that we have next. When you say, how are we gonna define highly qualified, highly effective? Is that going to be a decision that the board and administration come together on? Where are we going to take that next?
I'll defer to Dr. Boone.
That's, that's been one that we've kind of struggled with because it's very subjective. And when I think about, so the federal government at one point and states adopted highly qualified as meaning you were fully licensed. We know full, possession of a full licensure doesn't ensure success. But then we also have many classes that are taught that don't have an accompanying state assessment test with it, state assessment or SOL test with them. So how do you define highly qualified, highly effective for those teachers? It's a very, very subjective measure. For me, I think about it less about the individual and more about, do we have a cadre or a cohort of teachers in a building that collectively with the leadership are moving the needle on success? And therefore, we see that school rising, we see the progress happening. To me, that says we probably have a highly effective faculty working together with the leadership that's driving results. That allows us then to also work with, whether the outlier, someone who may not be successful, how do we give them the support that they need or do what's, what's needed there? So for me, it's more about, do we get the collective group of people that drive a set of results than this very subjective definition of highly effective? Where, you know, because of the individual work that goes on in the school, it's hard to assess that in some quantifiable measure. It also looks at what's the climate and the culture of a school? Because that gets important back to that piece around staff retention and, and, and how that begins to look and feel. So for me, a school that is meeting major targets and sustainable over time and continuing to show progress would be a better way of us thinking about, do we have a highly effective group there? And if not, to the earlier questions about teachers, perhaps those novice or those who may not have been a stronger teacher in some of our priority and focused schools, how do we get that cohort of folks there to drive success?
And to me, that's the per, point of having it there, cause it forces and encourages the discussion. You know, even as we talk about ourselves, Ms. Doyle and I were at the Economic Development Authority this morning and we were describing the successful growth that has been occurring in the division, at least as you look at, you know, accreditation as, as one measure. So, you know, part of the discussion around, you know, effective, and even with equity, there's always this tendency to focus on what we may perceive, and sometimes with our own biases, focus on the most challenged school. But let's say you have a school where we see we have high percentages of poverty and other things, disproportionate share of students with disabilities and things that we know result in challenges, but we are seeing growth in certain areas, whether it's reading or math, 30 points, 40 points, so forth. We could have a school where it's hardly any poverty, students come in above grade level, their scoring on their SOL scores, let's say 20% of advanced proficiency, and it stays flat.
Yeah.
For 10 years. So for us having the data, you know, we need to be able to look at that and say, if we see something flat where we perceive it as excelling, what do we do? Likewise, if we see that there's growth, how do we provide the, the supports? So that even though we know there may be gaps between the two, that we take this growth that we have there, have the sustainability and the support so that they too are, you know, excelling in these different, different measures. But I think having the question and having the, the data before us allows us to have that discussion and have it with some informed information in front of us versus, you know, just what we feel and just what we, what we believe. So this is intended to evoke these discussions and, you know, and this, this is the hard work. Cause coming up with a definition for what it may mean today could change for a variety of reasons. But at least to try to get to the point where month after month, year after year, we're seeing some things that are repeating themselves, then how do we provide supports? How do we evaluate budget recommendations? How do we evaluate staffing recommendations towards the outcomes that we say we want, want to achieve?
I just have one other question, and this is just, what, what formula do we use? Or how do we place the, our special ed population? Some schools may have 110, and I look at the population of the school and then I look at the number of special ed. But do we have like certain populations of disabilities, more in one setting and not the other? I, that's, just trying to figure out.
When you said 110.
A hundred and ten.
No, I was just, that was just an example.
That's a random number.
Yeah, that was just an example.
Oh, okay, I thought it was.
I just threw that out.
You're, you're expert there, so I wanted to make sure I was following.
We had a lengthy discussion, probably back at Granby High School one day, around our special education structures. So let me tell you what has been, over time, has become an inequity. And then let me also tell you what we're doing to try to address that inequity and what the standards are. The number of students that a teacher with a special education teacher services, we look at the state's program standards around that. So just like the standards of quality, SOQs are a foundation, we, we use that as our base. Low incidence populations, some of our more severely involved students or perhaps hearing impaired, those where we don't have larger numbers of students. Sometimes we do create classrooms that are more centralized or, or in a location so that you do have a group of students who can be supported together. Truthfully, a lot of our self-contained classrooms have ended up in buildings, not because the students live in that attendance zone, but because that's where space was available. And that has been a longstanding issue, not only in Norfolk, but in other districts. And so that's why you see some schools that don't have any self-contained and you have some schools that have self-contained and may have multiple classes. And part of the work that we've been doing with special education programming is asking those critical questions, where would the children be attending school if they were not disabled? That's the first question. And if we find that a classroom was put in a school 10 years ago because that was where the space or maybe some of the students were coming from there, but we haven't adjusted where that class is being served now, we may find that that school needs to be, that class needs to be shifted to another school in order to bring that equity of that neighborhood field that we, you know, that our, our attendance policy certainly supports for most of our students. So those are the things that we're looking at. We're also looking at, are there models that have been in place for, for certain programs and classrooms that are no longer the models that we're employing? And therefore, we need to dismantle some of those systems. But truthfully, that's one of our biggest inequities as a district is where classrooms for students with disabilities, particularly self-contained classrooms, not those low-incidence ones, but self-contained classrooms are located. One of the reasons Norview High School has a higher population of physically challenged high school-level students with disability was the accessibility piece. Lake Taylor and Norview High School have those larger numbers because the facility can accommodate them. We, we didn't have that. More in Granby weren't in a place where they could be able to support that. So, and, and Bogotey has, has students in that realm too. So that's a lot of how space has been designated. And so we have, just as we've done work with the Camp Allen, as we think about the phases and opening of that, we have looked very closely at who are the students that were attending Camp Allen? And what would that look like once the building is finished? So that, we're actually going and doing some of this classroom-by-classroom, building-by-building outlook, just, just for that reason.
Any other points or discussion on, on this at this time? Ms. Basine?
Eva, can you clarify to student attendance? Is that those who have not missed 10% or more?
No, that's just average daily attendance that's calculated at the end of the school year.
Okay, all right.
Anything else? Well, thank you, and there's a lot of effort to pull this together and, you know, we'll figure out, you know, how we can provide any additional supports that may be needed, whether it's merging the reports or providing the staffing and technology infrastructure so that we can have this easier. That's the right word. And then even, cause there's a lot of things that we know we need to do, looking at scatter plot charts and all kinds of things that'll tell a different story or an additional story as we get into the analysis of it. But I just wanna thank you, cause it, for me, is helpful. And as we have conversations about who goes where, what goes where, or who's being, who's getting more and who's getting less and what the results are, I mean, it's, it's in front of us. May take us a while to understand it all and dissect why it is what it is. But I think it's a major step forward for us to, to, to have it and frankly, being willing to have the conversation, cause there aren't many who are even willing to have the conversation. the conversation because there aren't many who are even willing to have the conversation.
One of the, some of the questions that Dr. Bailey and I have processed around this is, you know, how do you plan to use it as a report, use this report? And so we've heard that discussion as it relates to the Equity Task Force, you know, what do we hope to glean? And, and I think again, there, there are so many things we can include in there, so at some point, we have to remember to put a filter on ourselves of everything that, that we want into it and remember that we have a small department of accountability and research. But one of the things Dr. Bailey, I'm going to ask her to also do even before we take some of this work to the Equity Task Force is to bring together a smaller group of folks that she's going to do some vetting, you know, like, how, what do you call them when you, when you're doing some, some surveying and whatever else you bring in?
Focus group.
A focus group, yeah, like a focus group to help them look at this i- in its form currently and help us also improve.
Right. And, you know, thank you. And my staff has tried to work very hard to collapse this to a one-pager, knowing that when you have multiple pages, it's, it's hard to talk to others about how the district is doing. And so also looking at how we blend in the various reports. We are still working on the electronic dashboard and hope to show you where we are with that very soon.
Yeah, so I think ultimately the pictures are, you know, help to tell that story.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next for now, we have academic affairs and continuation of our educational planning discussion. As I look to Dr. Boone, I guess I just want to start with, we've had discussions about the St. Helena feeder pattern and pathway. We've talked about it quite a bit. I just want to know is there anything that anybody would like to discuss or have any questions about, in particular, the St. Helena feeder pattern? Because our plan at this point is to have that for consideration of a vote in two weeks at our business meeting. And so this is the last work session prior to, to that. So if there's anything else that people have questions about or have concerns about or just want to discuss further, let's do that first before we move forward into some of the other things that we know are further out on the, on the horizon. So any, any questions, considerations about the St. Helena pathway? I will share personally that, you know, I had received email invitation going back to December from the Blair Middle School PTA about coming out. So right now, I'm scheduled to go and just sit down and talk to them about whatever it is they would like to talk about next Tuesday. So I'll share that in case anybody else wants to join in that, in that conversation. I'm sure all of you, like I have, have received phone calls and emails from all over the city about different things. So I just wanted to open that up and I just think, Dr. Boone, you had something you wanted to speak to first?
Well, I believe Dr. Bailey sent out, you didn't send out, we, we, we have one-pager that we are, again, answering some of the questions that came up in terms of building capacity for, for St. Helena, for, in terms of the Blair enrollment over time. And so Dr. Bailey and her team have put together just a quick one-pager that will show that approval of this pathway for St. Helena to Blair will not oversubscribe the school's capacity. And so you will see that information here, so we wanted to, to bring that to your attention today. Because we know there were a couple of questions previously about that, so we wanted to.
So as of right now, no further questions or discussions far as the St. Helena pathway. Because what will be on the agenda for the 21st is the recommendation to have graduates from St. Helena Elementary School to attend Blair Middle School, whereas currently graduates of St. Helena Elementary School attend Lake Taylor Middle School. Okay. Well, you know, at the, on the 21st, we do vote, we'll still have, you know, comments on agenda and non-agenda items, and so we may still receive comments from the, from the public on the 21st, and you may still receive questions and comments prior to then. But I just want to make sure the board is comfortable right now with what we've received and if there's anything else going once, going twice.
Before it goes, just to answer questions that I'm getting. We chose Blair over Ruffner because?
So, well, I'll let you answer, but I give you my, my take on it. When we started down the path of the educational planning, part of the research that we started with and that we put forward to the team was to look at ways that we could have more socio-economically diverse pathways. So right now, if you look at the Equity Report we just received and the current pathway that we have St. Helena students on, I would describe as a challenged pathway. If we were to have those students go from St. Helena to Ruffner, they would continue on a challenged pathway. And so I would think that that was part of what, what factored in, into, into that recommendation.
And to piggyback, that's exactly, and that was what we were sharing at the joint meeting back in December, is that, you know, the board's charge to the, to the group was to address some of those equity pieces, particularly improving the socioeconomic diversity in schools. And unfortunately, housing patterns in Norfolk have created some of these, and so, you know, how, how do we, we get to where we're headed? Those students normally would attend Lake Taylor Middle, and so the Blair option is actually closer than traveling to Lake Taylor Middle also. The, the piece with Ruffner, again, one of the things, and now that the City Council has taken a vote to move forward the St. Paul's Quadrant work, and in a recent meeting with the City Manager, probably would be two years before any movement would start. But one of the things, we were also looking for, what are some permanent or long-term options? And as we've looked at excess capacity at the middle schools, trying to figure out, you know, what, how do we address Ruffner as part of that St. Paul's Quadrant revitalization? What will that begin to look like? And so because of some, the timing uncertainty, we hadn't been able to fully develop any recommendations around that. We looked at a lot of hypotheses around that. But the St. Helena being a small school allowed us to go ahead and advance that one. As, as we look at also determining what will be the future of Lake Taylor Middle School because opening Southside STEM Academy as a K-8 and currently, the majority of those students in six through eight come from that attendance boundary, it has impacted Lake Taylor Middle School and by next school year, they will be half the size that they had been. And so we're looking at all of that middle school excess capacity as part of that and what would the future look like for those buildings?
And I'm really just asking questions, and, and so then with that, the question I'm getting, if we're, if that was the case so that we would have more of a balance in terms of certain demographics, then why is it that in terms of the feeder schools, that we're not bringing other schools that way so that there would be also more of a balance?
When you, when you mean other schools what way? You mean, you mean geography wise?
You mean a more comprehensive?
In, in other words, why aren't we moving, changing feeder patterns from elementary school to perhaps Lake Taylor Middle would become its middle school, whereas historically may have been on this side of the bridge?
Right.
Well, we are and we're trying.
Okay. I'm just giving out questions that I'm getting.
No, no, it's fine. No, I'm glad you. I mean, you know, one of the things that, you know, Dr. Boone just mentioned, the scenario with Southside STEM Academy and how that has, I guess, turned into a default neighborhood school. I mean, I think it's something we have to talk about, the whole conversation around trying to go down the path of providing choice and options there, you know, again, was at the, at the core of this work. So, you know, we have to make the determination that if it's something that we want to see, do we have the, the will to do it? The academic rationale behind it and, and the parenting and community support to make it happen? If you go back and look at the data that we looked at with the retreat and the specialty school, magnet school, so we have conversations around, well, why aren't students from this school enrolling in specialty programs at, at that school? So this is what we're trying to, trying to tackle. And, you know, it, it didn't get the way it is overnight. It's been forty, fifty years of what we currently have, and now we're trying to take a step in the other direction and provide more opportunities for families wherever they live to access quality options.
And of course, the con- conversation still goes back to strengthening all of the schools.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I can, I can recall, you know, fifteen, some years ago, you know, behind the whole middle school conversation and there was a recommendation to turn what is today Academy for Discovery into Academy for Discovery. And folks came and said, no, we won't do it, it won't work, this is a problem, and it wasn't done. Then today, we have a three-eight citywide choice school and then folks come and say, well, how come you don't have more? So being able to have, you know, make some courageous steps sometimes is unsettling, but based upon the, in my opinion, based upon what we had put forward, it's a, it's a step in the right direction. We need to figure out the Southside STEM piece because I, you know, we, we voted as we voted, but I think we have to be willing to look at everything that we do and make a determination, is it working and achieving what we hope to work and achieve? And if not, what do we do about it? Any others?
Didn't bring my list.
Didn't bring your list? Well, email your list. And so far, all the questions you've asked, I've heard, and I think we, we've heard them and we've talked about them, but just speaking for myself, I don't personally see this as a, you know, we're forcing our children to go on one side of town and nobody wants to come to this side of town. As we mentioned, St. Helena is closer to Blair than was currently at Lake Taylor Middle. We've asked questions about teacher stability and supports and so forth, and I think it provides an opportunity for students that attend St. Helena to have access to some additional options. And it also is a benefit to the Blair community to also have access to some better options as well. So that's my personal take on it.
And I will say too, that those questions are the same questions that we have pondered over and discussed in the, the Task Force for Educational Planning. Those are the exact questions that have come to the table and, and many others. And, and we do have those very courageous conversations in there about how do we go forward?
Something comes back later, you're more than welcome to bring it back later, so.
I will.
I know. So next up, we have the continuation and looking at the rest of the educational planning that we have underway. And part of that involves the conversation around balancing our high school enrollment patterns, balancing our high school enrollment patterns in the context of the career and technical education high school, balancing our high schools in the enrollment and patterns in the context of the specialty slash magnet programs that we discussed in this Friday and have been discussing for, for some time. So, Dr. Boone, is it anything you'd like to take on? I don't recall at the retreat whether or not we had the opportunity to just talk about where we were with the Bogertie STEAM or did we? I, I remember getting a brief conversation.
It was.
Very brief.
It was brief. You know, since the board took that action and, and sent us on that, most of January, we weren't able to do a lot with it. Yes, Mr. Coleman, I was looking to see if he was there. We certainly had conversations with Bogertie's administration and beginning to think about what's a process that we would do to get into that deeper dive so that it truly is a meaningful STEAM focus. Did I miss anything on that? That's kind of.
It's been shared with the faculty as well.
Yeah, so we've had those conversations and now we'll put together the group, we're putting together the group to help us build it out. What does it look like? Part of that review is what part of STEAM do we already have in place that we can enhance and move to a different place for success in the fall? Then what are the other pieces of the STEAM mindset that we would, we will be creating from the beginning? And so we're, to use a term that probably would make the State Department very happy, we're doing some asset mapping at Bogertie as it relates to what's there with CTE, what's there already with the arts, what does that look like, what do we need to enhance and, and improve? You will recall from the conversation that the work that had been going on around improving specialty programs had been having that focus on the arts piece, which was in place as a specialty program. That's been a focus all year. So now we're trying to combine that conversation that had been underway and the work around the arts and merge that with the thinking around the, the STEM connection to it. So it's, it's a lot of work that yet to be had, but that, a big piece of this in the beginning is making the connections with the schools because they, school, they, you know, they, they read about it, heard about it, what does this mean? And we wanted to assure them, just, just like all other specialty programs at the other high schools, school and staff, faculty voice would be a big part of that, so we wanted them to know that upfront. So, so now we, like you said, we're getting ready to start that asset mapping, but we have a lot of that asset mapping already in place as it relates to the arts because that's the work that had been going on since we embarked on that specialty program review.
Questions? I just hope as part of that, there's the comprehensive view of it, not, not just the specialty program, but a comprehensive culture.
Yes, sir, Mr. Joel.
I'm just, I'm just, my recommendation. I'm not, I recognize that it's a, a tough task. So, so I just wanted to clarify the, what's, part of what's being considered, so.
So as we did the access management, is that what?
Asset mapping.
Mapping.
Mapping. I can't read my writing. And I, I think you said that the things that we had mostly in place were the pieces of the arts, the arts with. We, we had some of the arts in place.
Some of the arts in place.
Remember, we were very honest, everybody's been very honest about that, even last January at the mini-retreat where we looked at specialty programs, were very clear that the strength of Bogertie's arts program had really been tied to people who were in the arts program previously, and those folks had moved on or retired and didn't necessarily have that same level of passion at backfield or that direction, along with the revolving door and leadership changes. And so now we, that's what we said, what's in place that's solid? What are the pieces that we need to, to? What are the pieces that we need to, to include in that? Mr. Jordan, in his presentation in December, talked, you, you, you know, a lot about something that had emerged through some of this work already with the specialty program focus is, you know, what's that technology connection to the arts? And, and how do we, in, focus on that as part of this STEAM? So, now we're going to do all of that asset mapping. Um, we certainly have some positions in place. We have some courses in place related to the arts that are above and beyond some others. Um, but like, i- it's not robust. And so, that's the work.
No, I've been, you know, I will share one success story that I did here.
There are a lot of them.
In the photography class. And this young lady went on and got a major scholarship and I think she spoke, um, at an event they had this spring.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, she's just doing fantastic with them.
That's what I say. There are a lot of, I mean, you see, Booker T. now has a, a smaller strings program that has been showcased at, at a number of events. Um, and so, that too is thriving and, and flourishing. The district's commitment was there. That was one of the reasons that, that we said, changing the stage curtains and the work that was done in the auditorium to make sure that there was a venue that supports the arts there. So, those are the pieces that, that have been emerging. But how do we get that strong program of studies as it relates now to STEAM? But also the, and the arts piece of that.
Are you going to comment on that?
Well, as we were, as we've been talking about, you know, just making sure that we're intentional too about creating diverse environments there too. Cause you know, it's comprehensive, but I can't help but think of the feeder into it. You know, I can't think of Booker T. in isolation of what feeds into it and, um, how we attract students from across the city to, to take, to take advantage of what will be a stellar program, no doubt.
And that was the conversation, as I recall, from Friday, uh, when we looked at the number of applicants. What it, you know, how did that look like by, by specialty program and all of that? Absolutely. That's why it's going to take the time to really do more than just put a label on it.
Right.
But really build a strong program of studies related to STEAM, so that it is extremely attractive. And so, that's why, you know, we, we aren't just putting something out there to push a paper to the board and say, oh, yeah, we're all excited. And there's, people get there and there's nothing there.
Yes, right.
And so, we're to, we're trying to, just as we're doing the district redesign work, if we're going to design and redesign this focus at Booker T., we've got to do it from the ground up in a very strategic manner and something that's sustainable. And we can measure the results, including the attractiveness.
Cause if we strengthen that program, uh, to give it the kinds of things that it would need to, you wouldn't have to worry about the enrollment. People would be knocking down the door.
That's what I, that's what I mean. We want to be sure we have the opportunity.
Exactly.
And the seats available for, for people, cause they will, they will.
I mean, there's, uh, I mean, we know that, you know, when you look at the overall enrollment of the school, that's tied directly to housing patterns. I mean, it's just, you, you look at the number of children that used to live in the Booker T. Washington footprint, uh, ten years ago, and the number of children that live in the Booker T. Washington footprint today, much of that is a direct result of redevelopment. We know right now, when we talk about the St. Paul's quadrant, those families, those children right now, feed in the Booker T. So, that's something that we're going to have to, uh, consider. Uh, but I agree with you, Ms. Wa- I mean, I view it as building upon strengths. Anyone who has the opportunity to, um, listen to and watch the, might not get it correctly, but the Booker T. Jazz Ensemble, uh, you know, a couple of weeks ago, they were at, um, uh, Roughness Middle School for a fundraiser and they were there with professionals and they just stole the show. So, uh, the, the type of work that's already going there, you know, how do we build upon their strength? And how do we do it from an arts perspective? And then as we've heard from, uh, Governor McAuliffe and, uh, we hear, you know, I was just in DC and keep hearing nationally about, uh, students that are coming out prepared and, uh, cybersecurity and those types of things. I mean, to me, it, we are responding to the demand of the market and what the employers are requesting. And our research and data show that we have, um, uh, strong, but we want stronger programs at, uh, some of our other high schools. We've been having this conversation about, uh, program at, uh, Lake Taylor with the CTE. And we've said, we wanted to make sure that Booker T. has a strong in-demand program too. And this is just a exploratory step to see if, uh, if this is the right path for us to, uh, to achieve that. So.
I would say that it's no question that as we connect to the assets that are around Booker T. at Norfolk State and the programs that they offer, both in cybersecurity as well as their fine arts program, as we connect strongly to those programs, that will bring stability to, um, some of the things that we're trying to do at Booker T. And I think it will make it, um, a very attractive program that, um, parents from across the city would, would want to be involved in. So, I see a, I, I see great expectation there.
So, so next step, so you mentioned getting a group of.
No, we're already in next step.
You're already in next step.
No, you all gave us this assignment on December twentieth. And that's why we can say we have met with the fac- the faculty have been informed. Mr. Coleman said, we had a conversation with the principal, the faculty has been informed. And now they're starting wrapping that arm, their arms around that, that STEM piece. And what are the potentials in that and leaking, linking to the arts? But that the arts asset mapping and that work had been underway for the last year. So, we know where, what we have there, what we, what the vision is for part of that. Now, we had to go and begin to think more broadly about the vision because of moving just from the arts specialty to STEAM. So, no, that work is well underway.
All right, uh, so continued conversation around, uh, other portions of the educational planning, um, uh, tied to or aligned with the, uh, career in technical education, high school or other components of, um, of the educational planning, so.
Let me start with an apology. The board received an email that was an internal conversation email, not designed for the board and, uh, attached to some documents that did not have meaning for you, for you all at that point. So, let me start with that caveat and that apology. That email was not for you all. It was a notice that we were going to have this work available. We had planned to distribute those large, uh, demographic pieces at our next meeting. And then, of course, weather and, and different things came in and we didn't have those. It also went without a cover memo. So, let me tell you what you received. Um, several of the questions that board members had is that remind us again, what are the current demographics at the schools? What are the, you know, everything and what are the, uh, the demographics, the enrollment, the building capacity of those things? And then what did it look like under the scenarios, the, the two that, that you had us looking at? A, uh, programmatic pa- feeder pattern as well as the, um, associated attendance zone feeder pattern. So, that's what, um, Dennis Fuddy and, and those and are provided for the board, is the idea of what does building capacity, current live-in school boundary? And then a combined geographic programmatic boundary. Let me also, the, the one caveat on the combined, uh, geographic and programmatic option. That's not the finish point. That was one that we lifted from the other, cause we still have the work to do based on the, the feedback and the input from the board on, on that hybrid one that had some live-in. But this gives you an idea of what it looked like if we thought about a programmatic and a geographic combined option. So, having some live-in in, in that zone as well as perhaps if there's through South Side STEM or, or STEAM or any other school that, that fed into the potential for the Conference of CTE school. So, the first table looks at current school, high school live-in boundary, um, free reduced lunch percentages, um, racial and ethnicity.
Dr. Boone, can you pause one minute? So, does everybody have that table in front of them?
That one.
Okay, just to make sure.
My apologies.
No, no.
It, it just has the one option though, right?
Remember, we were working on a hybrid option. So, what we provided was the option that kind of brings in feeder and, and a live-in geographic one. So, that's why I say, the caveat on this, we wanted to get something in your hands. Remember, this was designed to be in your hands probably almost three and a half weeks ago, four weeks ago. But then when the meetings got, got bumped, we did, we didn't get it into your hands to explain. So.
I don't have that. Yeah, so we have, that's why I want to make sure, cause we have, today, we had on our desk two maps, three maps, four maps, thank God. We have some maps on the table.
Now, I had this before this meeting.
That's the one before this meeting. That's the one we should be talking about.
Right, so I want to make.
I'm not sure what you received today.
Right, that's not in our packet. That's why I just want to make sure that everybody either.
This is from a.
Has it, or we can pull it up to make sure.
I have it in the car. Okay, I saw Dennis leave. He might be going to pick up a copy. No, probably not.
Right.
Can I make a, so, at the last meeting when we talked about this, one of the pieces that I had requested to be comfortable with this programmatic option, or this, this particular option here was to see the demographic breakdown for each of the options. Um, just like this, but just, you know, with, with each of them.
So, so, Ms. Basine, I got to ask, are we doing the, you all focused narrowed it us to two options to begin that hybrid. So, that's the work that we're trying to do. That's what I say. We, we were able to quickly do one that was one of the options. One of those four options was programmatic and geographic combined. So, that's, that's what we, we brought here to be able to show, excuse me, what, what the impact would be. And when you look at this, we weren't trying to do all of the original four.
Okay.
Because, I mean, you all took us away from a couple of those options and so, we didn't see spending our time to go back and work on those options.
So, so this is, right, so this is just, uh, initial feedback, um, and demographic data based upon what we asked them to look at back in December. Doesn't mean that this is something that we're going to adopt. It's just a point of us being able to look at based upon what we asked the administration to consider. How does it look? And if we determine that it looks good, then we may recommend some additional steps. If we think that there's some concerns, we, we'll, we'll express those concerns. But at least to try to first narrow down the conversation, this gives us an opportunity to discuss those options, which may take us back to say, no, uh, go back again.
I guess I'm dropping ahead in my head, cause that's what I am now.
And going back and looking at my notes also from December twentieth, the question was, um, could we see the various streets that were involved? So, rather than a listing of streets, that's why we enlarged the maps with street names. So, the attached maps have the street names that correspond to it. So, you remember, the color coded, the, the key in the, in the corner shows purple is Booker T., green is Granby High School boundary, orange is Lake Taylor High School boundary, the light blue is Morris boundary and red is Norview High School's boundary. And so, we enlarged these so you could see street names. Because the way we had the maps originally, you couldn't see any street names. So, this gives you as many of the streets as we could populate in an eleven by fourteen map on, on this. And so, that was that part of the request, to see what streets are we talking about? And so, that's what we did. I haven't, I'm not sure what you received today.
It's just, it was just, uh, the same maps.
The four, the four options.
It was just.
Is what we received.
More maps.
This is the only option that I had presented, intended for you all to have. So, I'm not sure.
The one with the table on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as you see, this is much larger and you can see the streets. You see where the streets are in the purple. What are the streets that are part of? That, does that mean, I don't know. That are part of the current boundaries for the high schools. So, you see the street names that are there. We put it bold and white, so we could capture as many of the streets as possible. So, that, and that's based, one, one page is based on the current high school boundary. And the second page would be that proposed, uh, programmatic and geographic combined. Again, recognizing that this does not rec- that second one does not represent all of the conversation that we had. But we at least wanted to be able to give you a feel for what it, for what it could look like tweaked and, and with massage based on the input that you all had given us. So, that was the goal for the second table and map. And the goal is to get put it in you all's hands, so you would have had a couple of weeks to review it before we came back to this discussion. So, I apologize, it went out without a, a cover memo and, and like you said, and the internal email was, that was an internal email. That wasn't a board email.
So, that will allow you to walk us through it and then we can have any questions or feedback, uh, to the.
Mr. Fuddy and others are here. But essentially, if you look at the charts, the first, the first table addresses what current high school live-in boundary looks like by the five high schools. First one on the list is Booker T. Washington High School. Uh, there are eleven hundred fourteen students in the live-in boundary. We know that their enrollment is closer to nine seventy-five, nine fifty-seven, somewhere in there. But again, showing you what the boundary currently consists of. Excuse me, you see the percentage of free and reduced lunch, you see the racial breakdown and, um, percentages. And that continues for each of the other four high schools. I'll pause and see if there are questions there. It's going to look different from the equity, because that's actually.
No, I'm looking at something else.
So, is Broad, I'm, I'm looking for streets. That Broad Creek, is that part of Booker T. or Norview? I don't see any of the streets that I recognize.
It's actually divided.
Yeah.
It's part of, it goes to Booker T. and part goes to Broad Creek.
Goes to Booker T.
I mean, Norview, excuse me. Part of Broad Creek goes to Booker T., part of Nor- Broad Creek goes to Norview.
Yeah, and there's the.
So, so, and I guess that's my question in terms of why did the separation like that?
So, so, one, just some clarification. So, when you're saying Broad Creek, you mean historic Broad Creek?
Historic Broad Creek.
Not just the.
Right.
Public housing redevelopment.
Right, exactly. Historic Broad Creek.
So, we know that in the past with these, um, high school attendance zones in large measure, they are the zones that have been out there since the nineteen seventies. So, at one time, when you had, um, uh, um, Robertson Bowling there, uh, and the city was, and the school board was trying to make an effort to have, uh, racial diversity
Right.
in high schools, then you had these patterns. Over time, uh, some of the housing patterns have changed. But to my knowledge, this is probably the first real consideration of looking at, uh, any changes to, uh, high school attendance zones in sometime. And there have been tweaks. But, um, when you look at some of the, uh, this being carved out and that being carved out, it goes back to some of that history. And I remember one of the, maybe it was the first, uh, air planning steering committee meeting. I just sat in for a while. That was one of the first questions that, uh, the members of the steering committee had when they looked at the map. They had the exact same question that you had. How did this happen and why is it like this?
Is that, okay, so Richard Bowlin is, is one of the feeder schools.
To.
To, what, to Russell and Booker T.
Yes.
But aren't they, so if that's one of the feeder schools, wouldn't that go into some of the Norview people?
So, and I think this is where Dr. Robinson was raising the question about the map initially, cause we had information that showed some changes at the middle school. We were looking at feeder patterns. We're looking at high schools. So, keep in mind that when you go back to the elementary school, you used to have, uh, J.J. Roberts Elementary and Richard Bowlin Elementary. Then, when it was decided to close, uh, J.J. Roberts Dream Keeper, which editorial I'm still crying about, uh, we combined the elementary school attendance zone into Richard Bowlin.
Right.
So, um, the, the geography in terms of the, the middle school maps, you know, those changed during two thousand, two thousand and one. So, part of, when you go look at the big book and, uh, and on board docs, uh, Janelle, uh, linked to the work, even going back as far back as twenty thirteen when this, or twenty fourteen when this first got started, you're able to see those feeder patterns. So, it, it almost ties back. So it, it almost ties back to the question you were asking about St. Helena and, uh, and, and Russner. So, you've gotta look at the maps as they are today, put it in some context of why the boundaries are the way they are today, what the feeder patterns are today, and then what are recommendations coming forward around the, the principles that, um, that we have, and whether or not this is getting us there or not.
This doesn't make sense. Because if we're looking at racial diverse, that Broad Creek area is becoming very racially diverse, so why would we move them over to somewhere else?
Well, we aren't, we aren't moving them anywhere.
Well, I'm just- Move anywhere, this is where they are, and what would be the impact when we, if, if we, when we open the Conference of CTE High School?
Uh-huh.
And, so if you take the, Lake Taylor High School off as, as the fifth of these schools, and you only have a smaller attendance boundary, it will draw some new boundaries for the other four high schools in order to accommodate students, because remember, students would be coming from all over the city. There would just be a small geographic boundary that's associated with Lake Taylor High School, where that would be their attendance high school. So that, that was where the conversation went in December.
And I'm gonna come back to you on it, Ms. Doyle.
So, Dr. Breen, let's talk about the first point. How many, under the proposed programmatic and geographic, how many are programmatic and how many are geographic in the CTE High School at Lake Taylor?
What was your question, Ms. Doyle?
Under the proposed programmatic and geographic combined option, what is the percent programmatic versus geographic at the CTE?
I'm looking over at, uh, Mr. Fuddy, I will have to pull up those, those older ones, I gotta go back and see. Um, I don't remember those numbers.
But make sure I understand the, the question.
So, under the proposed-
Percentage of students?
Best I can guess is probably-
You can come to the mic.
At the geographic, maybe a hundred fifty?
Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry, it is in the second one. I, I, I can, you can tell how, I can tell how many are, I'm assuming are geographic, let me, let me do it that way. If you look in that second table, Lake Taylor High School, five hundred and ninety-three students. I think that reflects the geographic boundary. And then, programmatic feeder would be, again, students who opt into that as, as we draw that, but you all had-
But how many students will that be?
Well, remember, we're going toward that capacity of, of eleven to fourteen hundred over time. So, about, I remember Tracy saying about half would have been in the, um, the geographic boundary, and the other half then would begin to populate each year.
So, this map then, which is the combined option, only reflects five hundred and ninety-three live-ins?
Yes. Because you remember, Lake Taylor is a various, in that corner, it's a, the orange, while it looks like it covers a lot of land, that is not highly populated in terms of the high school students. And you can see the difference in how much orange was in the, on the first page map. If you juxtapose the two, you see how the orange is drastically reduced in that second map.
Okay, so that means that you're trying to pull then eight hundred from other parts of the city?
That's correct.
So, are the reductions in the proposed programmatic, does that equal eight hundred? Because to me, I haven't done the math on that to see that.
Probably not. Again, that would, that was, that table is designed as a model, not as the definitive. That's what we're working on, because we've, we've, in conversations, have to share the, the, the recommendations and the, the things that you all gave us to consider when we looked at a hybrid, uh, geographic and programmatic feeder. And so, those are the pieces now that we are reworking, but this, we were able just to grab this quickly from one of the, um, original four recommendations, so that you could at least get a picture of what it could look like.
So what does that mean for, let's say, a Granby or a Norview, in terms of then, how many students would be added to their current student population?
Okay, so look at the, the top chart.
Right.
Granby High School has eighteen hundred sixty-three students in live-in, but we know they also have a, a programmatic with the IB, so their numbers are closer into the two thousands, okay? So remember here, we're just looking at the, the, uh, live-in. With the new boundaries, the live-in possibility increases to nineteen hundred and eleven.
Right.
Okay, so you see, that's, that's how it shows the difference between the two.
Which means you would still have a population greater than two thousand with the-
That's correct.
IB.
And particularly if, if, that's why we talk about what's the percentage of students we need to, numbers of students that we would hope would opt into the CTE school, apply for it and be accepted from other schools. And that's why Tracy strongly recommended that we consider a small live-in, so that the program can begin initially and, and have there, and, and not have us oversubscribe the other high schools as such a depth.
But let's look at Norview, their numbers moved from seventeen hundred to twenty-two, I mean, that's four hundred students.
Yes.
That's a lot for that school to handle, what's the capacity?
Well, exactly, I mean, that's the point of the, of the, of the data.
It goes back to, there are those in the communities who still are insistent that we can operate Norfolk Public Schools with four high schools. Herein is that evidence that we cannot, we have to have that fifth high school. So this is the live-in. This assumes that not everybody who lives in currently attends Norview, and not everybody who would live in would attend Norview.
Right.
Remember, we talked about grandfathering in some students who would be in grades ten through twelve?
Right.
So that they, you know, they would have the option of staying or, or, or exiting. So that's part of that, that core, smaller core of students who are there. And so, this is that idea of how do we build into this citywide attractive program, but with a smaller footprint? But it will, it's going to necessitate the, as, and Arturo asked that question very well last time, what will be our marketing? How will we make sure we make this attractive to other students to want to be part of this? And therefore, they will leave their home high schools, really, you know, putting that space in the pressure valve and, and giving them some elbow room. What it does, though, when you look at, um, Boogertee is an example, where their live-in is currently eleven fourteen, their live-in would become thirteen eighty-seven. So we see a bump in potential enrollment there, that's, that's been one of our concerns. And how do we address excess capacity at a Boogertee? So therefore, we're looking at programmatic work with the STEAM, and then there's also some, some boundary influence also that could occur.
Although the bump projects an increase in the free and reduced lunch count. So, I mean, observation.
Yep, we concur.
And it takes into account students that don't live as nearby to it as it wants, as they have lived to their other potentials high school. Now, can I also ask you, is the St. Helena feeder to Blair, is that reflected here in the blue down here under the programmatic and geographic?
No, because this is about the CTE High School.
Well, I know, but, for instance, the blue, the blue down here, which is where the St. Helena population would go to Blair and then to Maury. So is that why this is blue? Yes, that's, so it's just a follow-on to that. Right, that's what I thought.
Would it be true to say that the bump in the Booker T. Washington population is really dependent upon how many of those students choose to go to the CTE program as well? Would that, would that, would that be right?
It, it doesn't say that yet.
No.
It just says that if, if we, based upon what's in front of us in terms of this concept of a programmatic and combined option, uh, what would it look like in terms of live-in for each of the high schools? Then, what may occur in terms of, you know, who makes the choice, we don't, we don't know that.
Sure, sure.
I know. And that's why Tracy had that strong recommendation that we consider at least a portion of a live-in, so that we will make sure we had some substance there to begin with.
Have we done a pulse on what we think the community will do in terms of, um, wanting their children to go to the CTE?
Well, I'm, I'm looking over, I'm looking at Ms. Goshen, but what we keep hearing is, is the excitement about it.
Right, right.
That's what we keep hearing. Because it's, you know, obviously, we'd had the brand-new building to go with, it'd be real lots of bells and whistles. But, but, I mean, you, you know, that's, that's what people are attracted to. But the idea of, um, this type of programming and the focus and almost, yeah, that, that very special feel is attractive, as we've talked with folks and students.
Dr. Robinson?
Is the, would the long-term plan to be, uh, total citywide, uh, enrollment for the CTE five years from, uh, ten years down the road?
I, I-
Or would there always be?
It could get there, but I think at least until we do something with some, perhaps some other facilities, it depends on what's the final size of the new facility at Lake Taylor High School. If, if it can increase some capacity and some things, we may not need that feeder, but what's gonna happen at the other schools? Because part of that geographic model is not only about initiating the program, but also the stress on the other four high schools. And so, excuse me, what will Maury, Maury's design look like? You know, what will be done with, with Boogertee as we go into STEAM? And so, as we start thinking about the footprints of those schools, it could relieve some of that over time. But at this moment, we, we have to look at the capacity that we have.
Just the way I look at it, if, if the CTs, I shouldn't say, when the CTi, High School takes hold and it becomes very competitive to get in, and everybody wants it, that's gonna take twelve hundred students out of that mix, out of the total seventy-six hundred. And they'll be pulled out of, invariably, out of each of the other four high schools to, to create that-
And what used to be the Lake Taylor boundary.
Right.
See, remember, so some of those students may opt into the Conference of CTE School, even if that had, it, which would have been their high school had we not drawn, changed, we focused on changing boundaries. So very likely, it could, it could flip totally. And you could see a lot of students going back to, wanting to opt back into that school, uh, for the programmatic piece of it.
Hopefully, ten years down the road, we're, we're looking at building the new building there, within ten years.
I was gonna say, I hope we in there before ten years.
I was thinking, just thinking conservatively, just because of funding.
Yeah, well, and, and that's gonna be an important piece, because the longer we have it in dual, in separate campuses, the more stress it will be on that ultimate success and feel of that, that program that's necessary, so. The building piece is, is a critical piece, but we couldn't wait for the building, otherwise, we'd be talking about this ten years from now.
Exactly.
I mean, I would like to believe that, um, if all that we're hearing from the business community, and, and I don't mean just in Norfolk, but statewide around the country, uh, what we hear from state legislators, you know, what I heard in Senator King's office, what I heard talking to Congressman Scott's, uh, staff, and, uh, and even at the, um, NSBA Advocacy Institute that I just attended this weekend, uh, you know, the CTE, uh, comprehensive CTE, CTE and academics, not CTE trying to track students down a particular path, is what the employers are demanding. And so, um, considering what we've been looking at here in Norfolk as a first step here in the Commonwealth, uh, it would be nice to see these dominoes align in a way to support what it is people would say that they, they want. Um, so I think it's like anything else, uh, if we go back and look at some of the enrollment around, you know, IB and the medical program and other things, uh, there was a period where it may have started off small, and then it grew in demand as, uh, families and students saw the, the benefits of it. Uh, but there's so much national and local conversation about, um, CTE, that I think what, what we've been talking about, uh, comprehensive, uh, CT and academics, and all the other supports and opportunities that, that come with the, at least the Worcester model, you know, to me, it's a matter of us doing it. Any other thoughts on the map and demographics that we have in front of us?
We're gonna continue to refine that option that you all asked us to look at, that hybrid option. And so, we'll continue to work on that, and we'll be able to bring that back to you. But we wanted you to at least see, get a feel for what it-
So just a couple of thoughts I have, just in looking at this option. So I mentioned earlier that, um, Ms. Wagner, I think, was kind of touching on it. So when I look at the, any of these options, as I'm personally looking at it, uh, you know, I'm doing, uh, check for, um, uh, enrollment balances at the schools. I'm doing checks for, uh, free and reduced lunch, uh, concentrations. And, you know, I had sent to you all back in November when, uh, Tracy was here, you know, I just was playing around with the, with some markers, because I'm still of the mind that we ought to, let's say we didn't have the CTE as a driver. Let's say we just know right now that we have, um, disparities in our enrollment at our high schools, and we were trying to have a more balanced enrollment. What would we do to try to balance the current attendance zones, so that the enrollments were about the same? You know, specialty programs not included, I can't remember what number you said, Dr. Boone, twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, whatever that number is. How would we balance five high schools in the twelve to fourteen hundred enrollment area, where to the greatest extent possible, uh, all the high schools were close to the district average in terms of free and reduced lunch? So I would look at that first. And then, as I looked at the options for CT or any other program, you know, I'm trying to evaluate and assess the impact of these recommendations on that. And, um, uh, so that's just the way I'm personally looking at it and think that, uh, we need to give some consideration to, because even as we look at some of the proposed, um, uh, boundary changes. So for example, we know right now, at least when I was working on my map, I knew that in the current Booker T. Washington footprint, uh, almost all, a significant portion of, uh, low-income housing is in a feeder pathway either to, uh, Booker T. or Lake Taylor High School. When you follow the middle schools, likewise, it follows that middle school pattern. And if you follow the elementary schools, likewise, it follows that elementary school pattern. So if we have an opportunity from a comprehensive nature to look at whether or not at the high school and middle and elementary school level, what are we seeing in terms of these pathways? To me, that ties right back to the equity report we had earlier and the research and outcomes that we, that we talked about. So how do we maximize to the greatest extent that we can, that all students in Norfolk Public Schools have as socially, economically diverse opportunities as they can with, um, um, strong, steady, uh, teaching core and learning environments, such that the outcomes that we are seeing in terms of graduation rates, in terms of, um, demand for our schools and our programs is, is growing? And so, while I look at it in pieces, I'm always still trying to look at it in that, you know, how that bigger puzzle fits together, and it's hard.
It, it is very hard, because we would be looking at a sixty-five, thirty-five.
I would suggest then, Mr. Jordan, that you, uh, bring a proposed map.
I did.
It's actually on, it's on-
It was the first draft, and like I said, I didn't have any data, I just used, uh, colored pencils, colored markers. Uh, in my first grab at it, um, you know, it, it gave, uh, provided too many students-
To the rod, to Jordan?
Yeah, that's, that's what they called it.
I just wanna make sure that you're bringing it forward.
I didn't call it that, they called it that.
I just want you to know that, that you're bringing it forward to the board for consideration, okay?
Well, what I did was, when we-
Okay.
We met back in November, uh, I shared that I was gonna take a stab. I shared that back with the board, and I didn't have any data, I didn't have any software or anything. I just had a sense of, you know, I knew the neighborhoods. And, uh, some time ago, when we were talking about the current high school attendance zone map, you can see, as Ms. Wagner was just saying earlier, that it was all split up. So I was trying to figure out if there was some way to have some geographic contiguousness- So I was trying to figure out if there was some way to have some geographic contiguousness, I think is the word, along with the socioeconomic diversity that kind of married to the average of the district, and balanced enrollment. My stab with a marker resulted in Norview, if you scroll back, resulted in Norview's boundaries being much greater than, than its current. So, you know, I'd like to go back and take another stab at it. But if you look to the far right at the free and reduced lunch status, you see that there's no high school over eighty, three are in the sixties, one's in the fifty-nine. So, again, with some tools, being able to go back and see, can you make some adjustments that still look towards providing some of that geographical continuity? And at the same time, you know, reach some of these other areas in terms of utilization capacity and live-in? I mean, in this model, Ms. Banks, if you scroll down, you know, the, the green that I was tying to Norview was just too big. And so, again, that was just me with the marker that I just asked if they would take a, take a look at. But my intent was, if you scroll down just a little bit, to try to have oranges as a block, yellows as a block, purples at a block, greens as a block, light blues as a block. So you had this continuous, or some people may call them geographical, high schools. But at the same time, try to address the enrollments disparities that we were seeing and the, try to have better socioeconomic balance as well.
Can I just ask you, what is the orange blob, and then what's the orange to the left of the blob?
It's, again, you, you have to keep in mind, I literally just did this with a Mac tool.
Yeah, but what's the deep orange? I just don't understand, who's, who is that?
So, so all I did was, if you look at your current, so that's Booker T.'s attendance zone.
Yeah, but what is this right here? Is this orange or yellow?
It's orange.
So it's both, so it's all one thing?
It's all one thing. So the orange kind of goes as an L.
Okay.
The yellow goes around it, so the yellow was Maury, the orange was Booker T., the green was Norview, the violet or purple is Lake Taylor, and at the top, the light blue was Granby. And if you go all the way up to where the map is, you can see that, again, without any tools, it made Norview's live-in much larger than the others. It also made Norview's utilization too high. But my goal was to try to see if I could draw it in such a way, they gave the live-in, so they were about the same. It gave the utilization underneath the numbers that the superintendent recommendation, superintendent administration were recommending, and try to have it so that, whereas currently, we have two high schools that are, I would say, on the high end in terms of what we have up there is disadvantaged, not my words. But to bring it more so that the high schools reflected the, the district average. That was my attempt, my raw attempt with a marker with no software or tools behind it, I just want to keep saying that.
And to your, to your credit, and as an observation, if you look at the proposed programmatic and geographic combined, while not perfect, yes, Booker T. jumps up to eighty, Granby reduces to fifty-four percent from where it was. Ignore the Lake Taylor High School, because that's based on only five hundred and ninety-three students, so ignore that one. Maury fifty-three, Norview High School sixty-three. And so, yeah, so, so we, we were getting closer to, to some of that, yeah.
Yeah, the only big difference was if, Ms. Banks, if you come down on that one, was when you look at that map, you still see the, you know, big blue disconnecting the orange, the dark blue split by the orange and the red, red or the pink kind of split and the green. So, again, I was just trying to see if there was a way to have it more contiguous and aligned with some of the goals that we had been talking about.
Jordan, in the development of your map, did you give the different categories any priority? Like, for instance, is the, the, the idea behind the, bringing equity to socioeconomic status, crowding, for instance, would that be more important in your estimation than some of the other things that you were accounting for?
I, I didn't, I was really just looking at it through the lens that we asked the consultant and the steering committee to look at. So I was trying to figure out if there was a way to achieve all three. And then, you know, board administration would have to make, you know, have to make tough decisions if we found something was out of balance. Which frankly, no matter what recommendation comes forth, we're gonna have that same discussion around, because nothing's gonna be perfect. So what do we prioritize and what do we think frankly is going to be, first of all, in the best interest of students? And then, secondly, something that, that the community would find, something that they, they can support. So, again, this was just me with a pencil, and I hadn't figured out all the other stuff.
Dr. Gabriel?
I have two questions. For the Lake Taylor High School piece.
One, that's an area.
On your scenario, and I guess for the other ones, we're just kind of projecting what we think the free and reduced lunch estimates are gonna be?
Well, we, the way in which we can, they do the geocoding, we have some of that populated into the system. So that's how they can manipulate and come up with what those percentages look like based on.
Okay. Because we're gonna have the percentage of those that apply, and then the percentage of the live-in, and that's what we're taking up.
This doesn't, this doesn't have anything to do with who may choose. This is just simply a.
That's just based on the colors.
This is based upon housing patterns, where people live. And if we were just balancing high school enrollment in a way that tried to give each high school about the same number of live-in and do it in a way that brings more balance. Because often in the conversation around housing in schools, the typical conversation is, well, we can't do this because of the neighborhood. Or we can't do the neighborhood because of the schools. And based upon the work that the administration had presented to us, when I looked at it, I was like, okay, well, they had a, I thought they did a very good job of moving it there. But when I looked at the patterns, you know, I know, you know, just from my own personal interests, you know, I know where all the assisted housing happens to be. I know that, you know, where things are disproportionately. I know where, you can look at the, the housing study that the city has done, and you can see where low-income housing tax credit properties currently exist and where they're being proposed. And so, as we met with the planning commission and we talked about, what's the impact of your housing decisions on schools? And how can schools be an economic driver for the, for the city? You know, that's what I was using for, for basis, and as Dr. Boone mentioned earlier, with, with what the city is considering in St. Paul's quadrant. If we aren't careful, we will find that we can simply take, you know, a challenged neighborhood and some challenged schools, and then we end up distributing the challenge versus distributing the opportunity. And so I just think it's something we have to be able to look at in order to have those conversations.
Right, my second question is, what is the timeline again that we're working on for adoption? And then moving for getting the information out to?
No later than March, because we have to do, we, we need it sooner, but obviously, the weather just set us back. Because we need to be able to do the marketing, allow students to do their scheduling, because all of that begins in March, so.
Are we also gonna have community forums to get input on this change?
Probably need at least one.
Yeah, I would think so.
Just, just for clarity, no later than March for?
In order for a fall start.
Fall of?
Eighteen.
Of eighteen. So the business meeting would be, would be where we'd vote.
So we, the presentation that we got last Friday, in terms of what's being done with the current enrollment is what it is. You're saying that in March, we would vote on some high school attendance boundaries that would then go into effect September of this, of twenty-eighteen?
All right, okay.
And that's in order to stand up the CTE this year at Lake Taylor with a portion of those students enrolling in CTE versus, as of, and then three fourths live-in potentially?
It's aggressive.
Yeah.
Ms. Basin?
So, so our consultant ran the, the live-in, the capacity, the, the table that you see above this map, when Mr. Jordan's proposing. Is it possible to get them to provide?
No, so number one, I'm not proposing it.
No, I know.
I just did an assessment, but no, the.
But who provided the numbers?
Uh, the, the staff and the consultant worked on it.
Yeah, I'm just making sure everybody.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't make those numbers up.
No, I know, I was just.
Just clarifying, no, I did not do those numbers.
Is it possible to get the scenarios that have been provided with this map in mind, just to see how it does? Because the one thing that strikes me with the, the current proposed programmatic and geographic combined option is the jump in, we significantly make Booker T. more racially isolated as well. So that's something that I'm also looking at as we.
And that also happens in Mr. Jordan's scenario, because when you draw the contiguous boundary, you know what I'm saying? The neighborhoods that, as we continue.
It's, well, that, that's why I'm asking.
Right, it, it doesn't have the racial diverse, it has disadvantage in live-in and capacity is on this currently. What we don't have is the racial breakdown of the same thing.
Yeah, frankly, I was, I didn't, I mean, I didn't get those numbers reported back. You know, our focus had been on socioeconomic diversity, and that's what I was giving attention.
It is, but that's something that jumps out here.
Right.
This, this particular one, it'd be at ninety percent.
But just, but just for clarity, just as I was looking at it, you know, so we know in, in our city's ward system, we know that we have half the city that has been racially gerrymandered for a seventy percent African-American ward, and one half the city, and a sixty-five percent white ward and other half of the city. So we know that if you just follow the ward maps, you can see how those have been designed to factor in that. I wasn't factoring in that. But I was looking at just the knowledge of that, that you tend to have the central part of the city, which is the existing Booker T. Washington footprint, for the most part, is in that center, which follows those historic, you know, as they used to call them, Negro Zones. When you look at the south side, we know that right now, the south side was, is also a neighborhood that's overwhelmingly African-American. And then where there's been redevelopment over time, there have been neighborhoods that have changed as a result of redevelopment. The north side of the city for years has always been much more, if you want to talk about race, racially diverse than, you know, other parts of the city. So while it is true that I don't have those numbers in front of me, I would, on average, bet that is, if you wanted to look at race, that is probably more racially diverse in my marker off the top of my head drawing than what we probably currently have today. But they can, they could look at those numbers. But again, I don't want them to build upon this as it currently exists, because it doesn't provide the live-in balance. As again, where Norview is as high as two thousand, and Booker T. is as low as twelve hundred. I still like to see some tweaks, if possible.
Absolutely.
To try to bring that live-in balance before they consider anything.
Right, and I guess that's what, that's what I'm getting at, if we can have the consultants go back and, and finagle the line so that we do have more balance and then look at, because to me, we, we are approaching more balanced high schools with this scenario. And I think with a goal of at least trying not to go too far above seventy, you know, if that's, if that's.
Well, like I say, with the proposed programmatic geographic, we, we get there. What this one doesn't factor in, Mr. Jordan has, just for context, is this keeps the full Lake Taylor boundary.
First.
First.
Right.
And so, once you take Lake Taylor out as a full boundary, that's what throws in some of the other skewing.
Right.
You know, in terms of upping the, the percentage.
What do you mean by the full Lake Taylor boundary, again, the, the, what's currently?
Right, so what I have is, we have existing boundaries right now for the five high schools. What I did was look at changing those existing boundaries, trying to balance five high schools.
Right.
Then, the theory is then, whatever changes would be considered based upon the CTE or the programmatic options would be based upon the current balanced option versus the current imbalanced option. And I think what, what Dr. Boone is pointing out is, in doing what I did, I did not calculate any of these options that we've been talking about.
You've just reset the baseline?
I just reset the baseline.
Reset the baseline, okay.
Without layering over the potential programmatic geographic.
Right, because I thought, because I thought redevelopment.
And that's what I'm asking, if we could layer that for the CTE high school.
Well, yeah, we can, but what's the end, what's the end goal? I'm, I'm, I'm not pushing back, I'm just trying to figure out what you're asking us to do, because you're asking us a lot to do a lot in every one of these conversations. And so, I, I looked at this, and this makes a great deal of sense, because I looked at it when Mr. Jordan first submitted it to us. And then when I look at the proposed programmatic, we're getting very close to that with the exception of Booker T. And herein is the issue with Booker T. is the exact reason that the city is doing the St. Paul's project. Because poverty is extremely concentrated there. And as long as we work on a contiguous, geographically contiguous boundary for Booker T., we absorb a lot of that into, and that's why it contends to, to go up. The, the other piece, so I, I like contiguous, I like it clean and contiguous, you know. But that is the challenge. The other piece is, we're talking, the thing that keeps me up at night over all of this is the fact that two years from now, we don't know what St. Paul's will be looking like, and here we go again. And so, but do, or do we draw the boundaries such that the streets that are currently in St. Paul's, that currently go to Booker T., are the streets that will currently, will continue going, going forward? That would ease our job, but those are some of those questions that, that we keep putting in there. We can run any scenario that the board wants, any and every scenario. But we've got to figure out, what scenarios do you want us to run to accomplish which set of goals so we can get something to you? Everything can't be the first option.
Right. And I just want to be, I, it was not my intent to upset the apple cart. I sent this back in November to Dr. Boone's point. Just knowing, just using this St. Paul's effort as an example. We know from the Broad Creek experience that when redevelopment occurred in, on Robertson Bowling, that enrollment dropped for Booker T. We also know that.
And Ruffner.
And Ruffner. We also know that the vast majority of the families that moved off-site moved to other neighborhoods that were challenged. So, one of the intentionality's I was trying to do with my doodling was to first break up the challenge feeder patterns. So even if the, you know, if the city and the private sector and the collaboration goes forward and does a successful redevelopment in the current St. Paul's area, then if there's success there and there's a mixed-income neighborhood that emerges, that mixed-income neighborhood in the current boundaries would feed through the Booker T. Washington footprint. The, some of the other changes that I have breaks things up, so even if families were to, uh, follow some of the same patterns that we've seen historically in terms of redevelopment, where this is different is, uh, they would be, uh, potentially just in terms of where housing and absorption opportunities are, they'll be more likely to be absorbed into other, uh, mixed income or better mixed income neighbors in schools than us just seeing the concentration go elsewhere and then we find ourselves dealing with the same challenges. So that was the thought behind it, there's, I'm no expert in it, it's just a map, it's just a doodling, it's just kind of having a feel for, uh, you know, where the housing patterns are and what's being, being discussed. But I did try to take into account for that, but no matter what we do, uh, there's going to be impact based upon redevelopment, whether it's, uh, uh, St. Paul's quadrant or, uh, uh, the low-income housing tax credit revitalization is being done on public housing communities throughout the city, so. But I don't want to take up the whole time on that.
So let me just ask, under any scenario, presuming that perhaps you have a live-in population of Lake Taylor, making it up, twenty-five percent remains constant. Let's say Johnny doesn't want to go to Lake Taylor, CTE, and Johnny is the twenty-sixth percentile, meaning he's one percent over the twenty-five, there's not enough room for enough live-ins. Where does Johnny go to school?
I was okay till you did the twenty-six percent.
Okay, so the live-in capacity is at max, so Johnny can't go there anymore because he's live in.
No, because he can apply as a, for the CTE school.
What if he doesn't want to do CTE?
Then he can, all the other four high schools are.
Right, so he just applies and lands somewhere else, right?
Okay.
And I'm sorry, one more to that point. Are we trying to hold the Lake Taylor live-in relatively constant?
Well, that, that thing, that was Brad's question, over time would that flip out? And it could be, it could be that no one opts into the, the Lake Taylor school, the Conference of CTE High School, who lives in that zone, so it could be a hundred percent kids from outside of that zone. Over time, a board and a governance team may need to revisit that and pull that out.
Right.
So for the sake of the agenda, um, so we've, we, we know that the St. Helena feeder pattern pathway is coming forward. We've heard, and we've had a good discussion today, uh, we know we have, uh, another workshop, uh, set up on the twenty-first that needs to help us have any further discussions with this budget and the other things that we know we have to do in terms of, um, the tightness of the schedule for the next six weeks, both in terms of driving towards a budget and driving towards, uh, recommendations associated with, uh, this next phase of the educational planning. So those things have been set aside for us to continue the conversation. Is anything that you would like to bring forward right now before we, uh, you know, try to move forward with the rest of the agenda unless there's, you know, a need for us to have more conversation here and then we can flex as needed?
What are we going to see then as a workshop on the twenty-first that's different than today?
So we, just as we did with the, uh, this meeting coming out of retreat, we've, you know, had some discussions and we just kind of need to get a sense from the board what, anything additional we would like for, uh, the administration to consider, uh, for that, for that next presentation. So that's really for us to determine what, what we need, uh, if anything. But I, I don't want to force that now, but we have time.
We're going to.
Before we finish today, we'll have time.
The other thing we will do is to clean up around the, the geographic district-wide selection piece. We'll do some cleanup around that and, um, improve that, but we, like you said, we lifted that quickly because it was one of the four options and we were able to grab them pretty quickly, to give an example.
Would you like us to send that information, any, what questions we have via email, copy the whole board?
I mean, at this point, I think before we wrap up today, if there's anything that we know we want, um, Dr. Boone or a team to consider now, that we could do that now, obviously, like any other meeting, we're going to go home and digest some things some more, so absolutely.
One item that I would like to get a little bit more information on is from, uh, transportation, but from, uh, the budget, transportation, any projections or?
Well, a, a couple of things, and, and this is part of, of, of what we're running and how this finally looks will tell us. Obviously, if, when we redraw the boundaries and if the majority of the Lake Taylor High School boundary goes somewhere else, that's saying safety and distance will apply to what the transportation will look like. So that's pretty much a wash, that's moving transportation from traveling to one direction to traveling to another. That makes it pretty much a wash. What will be different in this also that we have to factor in for the transportation cost are the shuttle that would run between NTC and Lake Taylor High School. What does that look like? Does that have cost implications? And maintaining the service between the other four high schools until those students graduate. You remember, we said anybody who was currently at NTC would be able to continue. Anyone interested in going to NTC would have to enroll at Lake Taylor High School as a ninth grader. That's the, the urgency around, um, scheduling and all of that, as a ninth grader. So it's still going to take a couple of years till we phase out that transportation from the other four high schools. But again, as Ms. Goshen said in her impromptu commercial that night and what she said on Friday at the mini-retreat, the, the idea does not reduce CTE programming at the other four high schools. We'll continue to, to support those, to grow those, to make those, uh, as meaningful as they have been. But the access to what's at NTC would come through the Conference of High Schools.
Ms. Basin?
So, um, you know, I was looking at the community, so what did the community want? So when, when they were given these scenarios, I was looking at the results and I don't know if, um, someone could, could clarify whether this was from one of the community dialogues or, because I know it was online, and it was, and I was just looking at what those who did, which is a small number of people who responded, but, you know, it looks like, um, no attendance zone was more greatly supported as well as the both geographic and programmatic attendance zone, um.
I, I don't know if that's.
So I would have to look at the one that you had.
So, you know, I'm just trying to bring some.
Or a con, the confirmation or?
Yeah, this, this was, this says October two thousand seventeen, Community Meeting Results Report.
Yeah, I think they, when they had, um, there was a meeting, I think over at Archmont. There was a meeting.
At Richard Bowling.
At Richard Bowling.
And then South Side STEM.
South Side STEM, and at, at that time, they gave out.
Surveys.
Surveys, and so I think it's probably more reflective of those who attended those meetings versus, uh.
Right, but they did have, so there was an online component, which, you know, based on the numbers of responses here, I mean, I think there's three or four, um, but how, I guess, um, like, I'm personally not comfortable with the geographic programmatic zone, so I'm looking now for, what does the community want? You know, and so I'm looking for somewhere, some support for an option here, like, because it's really about what the community wants, and what do they want, and is it in the best interest of children? And for me, I don't feel like the option that's presented is, is it. So I'm, I'm, I'll just put, put that out there.
And, and I, I appreciate that, but I'll go back to even the conversations in December, and that's how we vetted the four to get to a hybrid. Once again, this is not what the board asked us to do, but it gave us an example of what it would look like in a similar model.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we need clear direction from what it is the board wants us to work on because we keep trying to build on what we heard or thought we heard in December as it relates to, yes, wanting some live in, um, and perhaps there is a way in which we encourage feeder patterns or, or whatever else. We, we need some direction, we, we can, we keep working that.
So I, I just, um, so I, I agree in terms of, uh, whatever we propose, uh, we know we have to explain, share, and have, um, uh, community feedback. But we've spent, I don't know, an hour today and I don't know how many hours prior, just ourselves with the, um, knowledge and exposure that we've had, trying to even understand the four options. So I think we, we, we did some narrowing, we've had some discussion today, and as we move forward, we know we're still going to have to have some public hearings and have some additional comment, but I think it's easier to try to get that input on options that we can clearly explain, define, and share the input than, uh, you know, four options here, six options here, seven options there. We'll never drive to any type of completion.
That's why I just only had two.
Yeah, I understand.
And which is why I'm turning to what the community results are showing to see, like, you know, is there, does that give us insight into what direction we should explore further?
I don't know.
So.
So the way that I look at it is, um, on the twenty-first, we're going to have a workshop, but that workshop is really contingent on the feedback that we give you, Dr. Boone, on the direction as to what we kind of receive and discuss. And then after that, we're going to have to have some type of board consensus on, is this the plan moving forward? Set a date for a public hearing or two, or however we want to determine community conversation, and then vote in March.
Absolutely.
It's a very tight timeline.
Well, again, this is, uh, so now I'm going to do my Dr. Boone. I mean, this is why it's important that, you know, we be here, that we delve through the work, that we drive towards consensus, and that we provide direction. And so, yes, you're, you're absolutely correct, uh, we know we have workshops coming up, we know we're going to have to deal with budget. We haven't even finished the agenda today, and so it's going to call upon, uh, the board to, uh, you know, do what we have to do in order to provide the support and direction, uh, to the superintendent. And keep in mind, as Dr. Boone has said before, and I'll yield to her to, uh, elaborate on it further as she so desires, you know, all this is also tied to the support that we want to get for our budget. So we were just talking about transportation and talking about other needs, you know, I'm sure that some of this, if not a significant portion of it, is also going to be tied to the school division, being able to get the resources that we need to address facilities and build outs and partnerships and collaboration and governing bodies and so forth. So we've had a lot of work, uh, we've had this on our table, and so, you know, you're right, Dr. Gabriel. I think we're going to have to really come forward, um, ready to do whatever it is that we need to do and prioritize so that we can provide this direction if we're going to see this happen on the timeframe that, that we've requested for it to occur.
So let, let me ask you this, Dr. Boone, you presented four options, or Dejon Rector presented four options with you. We narrowed it down to between options two and three.
Yeah.
Do you think, yeah, do you think that there are other options still to be considered? And would you put those as, would you put those forward? Do you think that our thinking is too broad, too narrow? Do you have other recommendations that you put forward?
Well, we vetted, and those four, we thought were very strong recommendations and very strong options. Knowing that, again, none, none of them represent the, the, the perfect end-all-be-all. And so that's why, you know, I kept pushing in December, give us your input on, that's why they were listed as preliminary recommendations, because we wanted to hear your input for us to narrow that focus and to be able to do. So that's what we've been working toward, but what I hear today is that we may not be any closer to a focus than we were in December.
I, I don't hear that, that's not what I hear, but.
I'm hearing and feeling it, so help me to understand otherwise.
How about your votes?
I'm with you, I think there's.
It's not going to be unanimous, not necessarily going to be unanimous.
Not looking for unanimous, I just need to figure out where do we need to spend our energy in order to bring back solid data and information that allows the board to make what it feels is the most appropriate decision to vet with the community, that's, that's what I need to know.
Well, and I think as we discussed, I'm sorry, in December, you're right, what we decided was the hybrid between options two and three of the four, and so, and that's what you've put forward today, and just, that's what we're looking at.
Right, and I, I agree, but, you know, at that time, I also said I wanted to see the demographic data. So now that I have it, I'm, I'm bringing it back to the table as we said we would, and, um, you know, we could still, if that's still the will of the majority of the board, we could do that and also look at, you know, if we can talk more about the programmatic, we're talking about, um, it being, just, just to refresh, programmatically, children who went through South Side STEM Academy, correct?
And any other schools could opt into that, that could be a defined boundary, but it didn't have to be.
Right, but the programmatic piece, though, is that feeder from that?
That, and, and remember, Trace, we also talked about what would come perhaps at the Lake Taylor middle, which however it ends up, whether it's a K eight, whether it's a K five, whether it's a, it's maintained as a middle school, what would be some programmatic options in that, we, you know, we had the very rich discussion about the investment of elementary is to help students get ready for the high school options that they may be interested in. And so why invest if we weren't trying to steer students to, to certain opportunities?
And I guess I would be more comfortable with it, as I, I think I've said in previous meetings, if there were greater choice seats in the South Side STEM Academy, so I, that's why I have trouble.
I, I, yeah.
You know, you understand that.
I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Look. Okay.
I, I'm just explaining my.
This horse is dead and cremated, so let me, let me go this way at this point.
Dr. Boone's saying.
Because we aren't going to meet targets for, for the fall of eighteen at the rate that we're going, so. I'm getting very close to coming back to the board with a different set of recommendations. If you, if we aren't going to be ready for the fall, then we need to pull back.
I don't, I don't agree with that at all.
I don't either.
Okay, but, but, so, okay, if we don't agree with that, then we've got to figure out how we begin to move this forward. I understand the South Side STEM, but if you're saying we have to deal with the South Side STEM feeder pattern as part of this, we cannot meet a goal for March. You know, I've said to the board before, if you want to redo the entire attendance boundary for South Side STEM, I'm glad to do it, just when I first got here, we couldn't get that accomplished in three months and stand up that school. If that's what the board wants, we can make that happen. However, I have to uncouple that from the CTE piece for this point in time, and we can continue to work on that for a future year, but if we, if that's predicated, if the CTE is predicated on the South Side STEM boundaries being shifted at this point, we will not and cannot be ready for the fall.
And that was never the condition that we were moving forward with CTE as a board, so.
As, as the will of the board.
So we, we, we.
We were, we were never coupling that before.
We're, we're in a work session.
Right, but I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm hearing that, I'm just saying that if that's a direction that the board decides, I'm not pushing back on Tanya, just Tanya, I'm just saying, if that's one of the emerg, and we've talked about South Side STEM tonight, you know, I'm not opposed to that, I'm just saying, we're trying to fix a whole lot of things by using one event, and it's going to take multiple events to get it. So this is what I've heard over this educational planning time, and, and the lens to which we've been doing this. We want to in, increase and, uh, foster greater socioeconomic diversity in our schools.
Yes.
We know we want to do that. We want to make sure that the pathways make sense, that kids aren't necessarily jumping over schools or whatever else. If we use the feeder patterns, how do we do that? That's another set of the work. In the meantime, the Conference of CTE High School has been on the drawing board for five-plus years, and so you ask, how do we move that forward? So we came forward with an idea to move that forward. All I'm saying is that there's multiple opportunities for more of this work to continue, but if we are going to be ready for the fall, we need to define what we need to do for the fall, and we need to put on a planning board, what are the other specific aspects of the work that you want us to, to engage in with cooperative strategies and move forward? And we can do that, but I just need to know what and when. We can take care of how, we just need to know what and when.
Well, then, I'm back to.
I had my hand up for.
Dr. Robinson, please.
Said it before and I'll say it again, we can't fix all the problems in one fell swoop. We're going to have to do this in phases, and if we wait to fix it all in one fell swoop, we'll never get anything accomplished. So let's move one of these options forward, we used, we looked at option two and option three as being the. We used, we looked at option two and option three as being the, the most viable of the, for the CTE program. I would recommend that we move those forward with the idea that we, we undertake in the, in future discussions how we can further decentralize socioeconomic challenged students. I, I have no problem with that, but in a city like Norfolk, it, you can't fix it in one, in one, one fix, or else it's gonna cause chaos.
I echo what Dr. Robinson just said, I'm completely on board. We, go ahead, Tanya, go ahead.
I think that's a feeder path, that's just one, and I go back to the, I, I get that, this is not the whole system, this is the feeder. If we're gonna have a programmatic feeder. So, so instead of harping on that, um, you know, we could go back to what Tracy's recommendation was, was that we have the geographic, and then we could, we could build the programs and then see, you know, how it goes. We may even choose to do, have it be no attendance zone, so, but that gives us the greatest flexibility, is what I recall. His recommendation being that if we choose a geographic attendance zone, we have greater flexibility to either add the programmatic piece or go to no attendance zone at a later point in time. So that's, I'm putting that as a, as one of the options for you all to consider.
You know, I think one of the greatest, one of the greatest things that have come out of these conversations, starting back from November, working on here, is we have, we have picked up on some things, such as if we have a one-hundred percent attend, um, application only for CTE, then where does that leave the other four schools? And then that's what kind of brought forth the impetus to simultaneously talk about Booker T. and CTE at the same time, how are we gonna build those program strings? So I think we've made some great gains there, and, uh, I'd like to keep us moving forward in that direction. And I think that as we build up the programs in each of the schools and put the efforts into that, then we can go back and look at how we're going to, um, get to that socioeconomic diversity. But I think that we've had some really good conversations about, about everything.
I don't, the conversations have been very rich. I got to move a conversation to action.
Yes.
Well, and, and as a board, we've said we wanted to in the past, and that we wanted CTE to get off the ground, and we wanted to do it this fall, and that these were other elements we were also gonna, um, consider, which is the St. Helena, and the, et cetera, et cetera. So I think we need to keep forward and moving in that forward direction. I'm all in for the CTE this fall.
Dr. Robinson?
Since we have to have public conversations on this, and we have to have them now, not today, but as soon as possible, is there a way that, would, would the board be, uh, amenable to proposing to present option two and option three to the public as the two most viable options, and then go from the discussion from there?
What do you mean, two and four?
Two and three.
Well, the option presented today was a hybrid of two and three, correct? So really, there are three options that you're suggesting then, two, three, and a hybrid of two, three?
I, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not proposing the hybrid, but if, if the board wanted it to, I, you know, I'd support it, but I think just two and three would be the best.
So I'll just, my take, uh, twenty minutes ago was, um, we asked the administration to take a look at something, they took a look at it, they've given us some feedback. We've had some questions, we've had some, uh, discussions. Uh, Dr. Boone is asking us, uh, what next? And I was just trying to give us time to digest what we've had, the meeting's not over, and just kind of marinate on it. I am, um, I'm not sure I quite follow, um, the idea that, um, CTE trumps something else. I'm not quite sure I'm following that in the sense that we've always said that we would, um, look at advancing CTE in September. I don't see where we are moving away from that at all. The only thing that, that I just heard in the, in this conversation was, um, you know, Ms. Bassin was just asking some questions from a work session perspective. Others have asked questions from a work session perspective. And we still have to come together as a board and provide some, some direction. But, um, I just want us to take some time to do that, and I don't know what is being asked. What is it that you are saying that you want us to do right now as far as the discussion that we've just, just had? So, um, what is it, what is it that you are recommending?
Well, here, if Dr. Boone tells us that she's about ready to make other recommendations that would hold off this, and let me finish.
Okay.
Hold off the CTE process, because we're asking for more information. I would say we use the information that we have to move the decision forward.
I don't, I don't disagree, I'm not sure what, uh, information that, um, what I heard was Ms. Bassin raised a question about the attendance zone at Southside STEM. I felt I heard Dr. Boone say, I can't do everything at one time. I need some ability to focus and move in phases. Then I also heard some conversation around, well, let's move forward to the CTE, and we'll figure out socioeconomic diversity later. So I'm, I'm not really clear on what it is that we're saying based upon the presentation that we. Well, I'm comfortable, but I'm, I'm comfortable, you're not comfortable, but I'm just trying to get a sense of what is it that you're, that you're recommending? If you all understand what you have before you, and if your questions have been asked, then provide for me what it is that you are suggesting that we do next. Otherwise, I'm not sure we all.
Right.
What, what's, what's that?
Let's bring forth option two and option three to the public.
Okay, so.
What are we calling option two and option three?
Option two is the geographic consideration.
The proposed programmatic and geographic.
Option two and option three was the proposed programmatic.
Watch for a moment.
Which aligns with.
So we'll have, uh, let's, 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 let's take a break. Um, and, uh, we will have, um, uh, Dr. Boone to, uh, help describe what that looks like to us, so that we can have further discussions on it, um, definitely at the workshop, but get updated maps and data that aligns with, with that recommendation.
Okay.
So we can make sure we're all on the same, same page.
All right, I'm going to break.
So, so we're gonna take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene at, uh, five forty-five, and then we'll proceed on with the, with the rest of the agenda. Feel comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right. Reconvene. So first of all, uh, as we proceed to, uh, our next agenda item, I just wanna thank, uh, the administration, the Educational Task Force, the consultants for all the work that they've been doing. I wanna thank the board for the open and candid conversation that we have, are having, and have had. I mean, it's tough, and, uh, we all know that dealing with, uh, uh, attendance zones and equity policies and many of the things that we've talked about, specialty programs, uh, is tough and often stressful. And, um, and I also know how hard it is to, uh, get everything that we have in a work session, then all of a sudden say how everybody feels, when I have a sense that we're all, at least many of us, I'll speak for myself, are still digesting all that, um, that we received. So my intent was, and my intent still is at this point, uh, we'll proceed, we'll come back with matters of the board. If there's additional thoughts that, um, school board members have before we end this work session, uh, we can have that conversation. But, um, I'll be reaching out to school board members if you've had an opportunity to marinate, uh, over what we've discussed today, and we will get a consensus of the board on what we would like Dr. Boone to do next, and we'll do it with openness and transparency, uh, you know, moving forward. And it's, you know, sometimes it's hard and sometimes it's tough, and that's okay, at least from my perspective. I think that's what a work session is about. So, um, uh, I don't want everybody to get too hung up on that right now. Dr. Boone and I had a good conversation on the break, and, uh, we'll probably have another conversation after the break. But the, the conversation is really about, um, how do we, uh, provide direction to the administration with the reality of the timeframe that we have, based upon the goals that we've set, and the amount of staff time that's required in order to, to get there? So, uh, I know we're sensitive to that. Uh, but for now, let's go into school board policy review, and, uh, we can come back, uh, as, as needed. So, uh, next agenda item, uh, school board policy. Uh, Dr. Boone, Dr. Burt Song, Ms. Bassin, Reverend Haywood Policy Committee, whoever's going to be, uh, leading us through the policies that we have before us, the floor is yours. All right.
Well, what you see here is that we, we went through and saw some duplication in, in policies around, uh, policy GBMZA, sexual harassment personnel, and JFHAZ, the Title IX sexual harassment policy. There's some redundancy there with policy GBA and GFHA. So we are, um, with that in place, we're going to, I guess repeal is the right word on, uh, GBMZA and JFHAZ. So are there any questions about that?
Any questions about the recommendation, um, before us for upcoming action? Ms. Doyle?
Any general assembly action that has been taken in the past impact us retiring these? Was there any requirement that these remain in place, would they be updated?
We, we last updated them in two thousand fifteen, and that was the last update that had come from the General Assembly. So we are current in our updates around these policies.
What happened was, uh, back in two thousand, two thousand one, excuse me. The Norfolk Public Schools, working with the Federal Office of Civil Rights, developed sexual harassment policies that were leading-edge policies at the time, and were so leading-edge that the Office of Civil Rights worked with the VSB A to create model policies that then could be adopted by divisions throughout the state. Once the VSB A created those model policies, or at some point thereafter Norfolk adopted them, and at that point, the unique policies that we had created back in two thousand, two thousand one should have been retired. And in fact, they were never revised after that. But we have continued to revise the VSB A model policies on the subject. And, uh, currently, the current version is, uh, from May two thousand fifteen, and that's the latest VSB update.
So is the VSB A retiring these as well?
The VSB A never had those, those were unique to Norfolk.
They had the Z on the, yeah, those were just Norfolk.
Okay.
Dr. Robinson?
I'm fine with it if you guys feel that it's, that we're covered in, in the other policies, and it's, it's redundant, it's no sense necessary having.
Yeah, yeah, it's redundant. Right, right.
Anyone else? All right, uh, thank you for that. Just while we were at, um, um, dealing with school board policy review, I just wanted to do a check-in. Over time, we've had, at least I know I've received, uh, different requests and, um, maybe just a recapture of, you know, what the process is, if any school board members had any new policies or anything that we wanted to have considered. So I just wanted to take a, a moment that, you know, our process is if there's something that, um, school board members would like for the policy committee to consider, uh, review and vet, and come back, uh, on a recommendation. You know, this is a, an opportunity for us to do that. I already know that they are looking at, um, um, the refresher of the advisory committees. Are there other policies, new or old, that right now you all know that you are considering based upon requests from the board outside of the normal, uh, VSB A process?
Well, yeah, we, we are currently looking at, you know, our non-discrimination policy to, to, uh, to consider if it is as inclusive as it possibly can be, as well as the bull, uh, whether we should have a separate bullying policy. And we're currently researching what other districts are doing, considering what's going on in the nation around that, or whether our policies would, uh, you know, around harassment already covers some of that. So those, those are some things that are up next on our, um,
Right.
agenda for upcoming meetings.
I think in the past twelve to twenty-four months, we looked at the student compact, the wellness policy.
Youth side retention.
Family engagement policy. So I just wanna know if there's anything, um, we're, we're dumping this on the, on the committee. Are there any policies, um, either existing policies that anyone has had in mind from our past work, or any new policies that you like for the committee to consider at this time?
Well.
I mean, we can do this at any point, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Ms. Bassin?
Well, one thing, you know, for a few, you know, thinking ahead, um, and I'm not sure that this falls in the policy realm, but in September, we did affirm, you know, the desire to, uh, explore implementation of later start times. And so putting forth a resolution to have the division explore that or include that in the next phase of the educational planning, which is something that we talked about wouldn't happen in this current phase, but in the next iteration, I would like to put a resolution forward that that is something that we, um, adopt for future planning. And, um, so I don't, I don't see it necessarily in a, in a policy, but I'm bringing it forward to you all to see how you want to address it, or whether we put forth just, you know, the resolution and.
Well, I mean, in terms of resolution, I mean, we all have the opportunity to, uh, put items forward for consideration, you know, second, and, uh, for vote, obviously with feedback and consideration from the administration. In the policy realm, to me at this point, if that's something that we want to consider, you know, are there, uh, school boards out there that have looked at it from a policy perspective? You know, is it something that policy would drive the, um, the what? And the, you know, administration would work on the, the when and the how and the, and the impact? So I still see it as a potential policy consideration if indeed there's some model for that.
Right.
Versus, not necessarily versus, but it sounds like to me what you're recommending is in the, uh, something that we would ask to be considered as part of the ongoing next phase of the educational planning.
Right.
Which I think is something different in my mind from the, from the policy piece.
Yeah, I, I think that first we need to explore the how to implement it, and then put whatever framework we come up with into a policy. That's, that's, I guess, how I had it in my brain, and of course, that, the administration may have a different
Well.
idea about that.
First, any, any feedback from, from the board as far as the, the concept? Dr. Gabriel?
I mean, it is incredibly overwhelmingly supported that later start times are so much more beneficial for adolescents. The research certainly supports it, and I would say that.
You turn your microphone on, please.
Oh. The research supports later start times. What we can do as a division to support that research and use that research in order to work towards what they are suggesting, I think is very important. I know that it's a big undertaking, Dr. Boone, to do that, and so I would say that maybe we can just go forth with, does the board feel like this is something that they want the division to consider? And then allow Dr. Boone and team to determine what that realistic timeline would be.
Right.
Well, in terms of a policy, um, statement, um, that we're not at the place where we would really re, consider this as a policy.
Well, I don't know. I mean, my, my point was is that because we're in the policy realm, then, you know, an option could be to just. then, you know, an option could be to just ask the committee to go and review policies. In terms of the resolution and saying, we want the administration to go work on as part of the educational planning, you know, I just, we just had a session where, uh, um, you know, we ended with a conversation around, how much can we do at this time? So, I just think that we need to think through it. We've talked about early start times and I haven't heard anyone have any major, um, objections to it. To me, it's just a matter of how and when and how much flexibility we provide for the administration to, you know, come back and give us some thoughts on it, uh, versus, you know, trying to impose something at, you know, with some deadline on the current, current conditions that we have. Dr. Robinson?
Two, two points come to my mind. One is priority. Is it a high priority that we make this change? We already have plenty for the superintendent and the administration to do. And the second is, is cost. Other school divisions have looked at it and, and decided that, um, the cost was, was, uh, too great to implement at this particular time. I understand the research, I'd necessarily agree with it, but, uh, um, but that's, that's just my personal opinion.
Ms. Bassin?
And at this point, you know, other divisions what, that are starting to have these conversations now are not spending resources studying whether it would be beneficial, because the research is very clear. The American Academy Pediatrics, the CDC, it has been, um, recommended by almost every health agency that, uh, has, has already studied it. So, like Virginia Beach didn't do a study to say it was about how to implement it. So, that's what, that's what I'm bringing forth, is a recommendation for the division to, we don't need to talk about whether we should, whether it's a good idea or not, because it is. And it's now, it's the how. It, uh, the, the research also on the impact of later start times is also coming out and is also very clear that it boosts academic performance, uh, also emotional, physical health. And even with sports, which is a, a po- you know, a popular counterargument to it is that it's reduced injuries on the athletic field. So, um, insufficient sleep is a health issue and it's an academic issue and it's an all-around issue. And I don't think we got, we have to spend resources on that aspect of it. And there are divisions that have done it at, um, you know, the minimal costs and with collaboration with the city in terms of transportation. So, my thing, my position is, do we want to put forth a resolution for them to figure, the administration to figure out how to implement it in the next phase of educational planning?
So, this would be my recommendation. If it's, if it's not going to fall in the policy, then we can close that piece of, out of it now. If it's something that, uh, you or any other board member would like to bring forward for consideration, then, you know, you could put together a draft and send it to us and we'll have to go through the process of discussion it, discussing it, debating it and having administration to, uh, inform us in, in that, this, in that discussion. So, you know, anyone can bring forward a resolution, get a second and we can have discussion on it. But I think in terms of where we are right now, if it's not going to be policy-driven, then we can close that portion of it out. And if it's something that, um, you like for the board to consider, then you can provide that to us and we'll follow through the, you know, the normal process, uh, for that and see if there's, uh, board will to, uh, you know, for consideration of, of what you bring forward. Folks comfortable with that? Dr. Robinson?
I'm just saying, I'm not opposed to it.
Right.
Philosophically, I'm just, it's, it's cost why, and prioritization.
Oh, I, I agree with you. I think that, I mean, that's the, that's why I don't want to, I wanted to be clear that any board member can bring some things forward. But we know as part of our process, we're not going to have a discussion around something that we haven't given the administration time to weigh in on. And in terms of prioritization, we just have to consider, if, if a resolution comes forward and we have discussion and we're asking the administration to opine on it tomorrow, then that means that's going to be some time that they won't be doing something else. So, I just think as you put together the resolution, just consider the timing of that. And what I thought I heard you say initially was that it was something that you saw for consideration in a future phase, but something you were trying to make sure that we put on the table for that future phase.
Correct. Right, not for this budget cycle or, you know, but that we, that we affirm that this is something that we want to put in the next phase. And we've talked about that as being a possibility, especially as we talk about high school attendance zones, programmatic changes. You know, we, it should be part of that as a comprehensive.
Any, any other discussion on, on that topic? Any other policies, anything policy-related board would like to have considered at this time? All right, then, then hearing none, thank you for your report. Uh, the policies that we have on our, uh, agenda today will appear at our twenty-first meeting. And so, we'll be prepared to, uh, act on those, um, on, uh, February twenty-first, so. Anything else from the policy committee? All right, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, advancing our, uh, school board, project, projected budget for, uh, fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. We've received, um, reports from, uh, Ms. Banks that you have before you. Ms. Banks, would you just like to take a moment, just kind of walk us through, um, what we have before us and how, how you've factored into, uh, what we have? And then we can get a sense of where the board is in terms of our, uh, budget at this time.
Thank you. As I said earlier, this is a snapshot of, um, what was spent in the previous fiscal year, the current fiscal year and what is projected for two thousand and nineteen. Now, this does not include, um, the superintendent's needs, but this is just based on how the school board has been operating over the last several years. And, um, as you can see, there were some reductions made in some areas.
Any, any thoughts, you know, one, I, uh, just, well, any, any thoughts or comments that anyone has on, uh, what we have? The, um, Dr. Boone, is, is there a, is part of what the administration has been looking at as far as the overall budget by, I guess, account codes or centers? Are you all having departments look at, um, reductions? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure how the reduction piece evolved for, for this, this particular.
We have not.
Okay.
Directed anyone to do anything. The, the process, every, every department submitted its budget request back in November. We then, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Pearl and, and Ms. Toh, Ms. Toh and Ms. Ingram, then put that together to see what it looked like.
Okay.
Then there were individual department conversations with the budget office for, for greater clarity and understanding, to see if it was in the right place. And then, uh, we've now gotten to the point that the district leadership team has done vetting over, uh, around larger aspects or additional positions and that type of thing. So, we did not issue.
Okay.
Uh, a directive with the budget instructions to reduce budgets by any particular amount. We did not.
All right, thank you. So, any, uh, opening thoughts from anyone in terms of?
Oh, I know, there's really lots of feedback.
No, we just hit it. Dr. Gabriel?
Can we walk through, um, the training and the travel, um, portion of it? Would that be okay?
Sure.
I guess what, what, I just, if we could walk through the, um, how much is allocated and then how much we plan to have and for next year? Because we will be having new board members coming on. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that we have the funds here and.
Yeah.
I, I, I just, go ahead.
Well, just to piggyback on that, so I had the same reaction. I just, I just feel that, uh, you know, as a board and as a community, we always have these conversations around, uh, you know, ask what you need. And, um, I think one of the things that we have before us gives us an opportunity to, um, assess how our travel and training and travel expenses are running against the budget that we had based upon, uh, the board that we have today. Personally, you all know I've always been an advocate for, uh, training and board development. We haven't always as a team been able to, uh, do everything together, uh, as a, as an entire governance team. And while I, I think it's always helpful for us to do that, we've also have a, we've had seasoned members of the board that's been kind of able to help guide us even as we've had transition. As we look at the composition of the board that we're going to have, uh, come in, uh, in July, we know that the majority of the board is going to be new. And so, I think we should, uh, try to provide an opportunity for that new board, that new governance team to, uh, be immersed in professional development and training, uh, to the extent that it makes, uh, financial sense so that, um, uh, we all know that, one, there's just the ability of trying to get a hold of all that's required of being a board member, never mind delving into all the things that we've just spent, uh, you know, all day, all day doing. So, you know, my recommendation would be that we take a deeper look at what might expenses be under the current program for, uh, you know, eight people, seven people fully participating and see what that looks like financially. And if we find that, um, that we have some uncomfortableness or uncomfortable with, the finances there, then we would come and look at, how do we reduce, whether it's in that budget line or in other budget lines to try to bring something forward that we think is, is responsible? But I would be concerned if we, um, set the future school board needs up based upon the current school board when it comes to the professional development and the training.
I agree.
So, how, how others, others feel about that or any other area of the budget at this time? Uh, Reverend Haywood?
So, I too, Mr. Jordan, have been a strong advocate of, um, board training. I've benefited quite a bit from it. So, when you look at the new board member orientation, just knowing that you're going to have, uh, more new board members, um, I think that we need to increase the attendance to that from two to at least four. And I also would recommend that the hot topic conferences, which give an opportunity for board members, um, on the, with the Virginia School Board Association to look at, um, some specific, um, areas of board governance, um, that we increase that from two to four as well. That'd be my recommendation for group board training.
Any other thoughts on that or, um, any items that, um, board members feel is maybe glaringly missing? Or areas where we feel like we can make, uh, you know, other adjustments? What I, what I would do is based upon this conversation is, uh, you know, get back with Mrs. Banks based upon where the board is and come back with another revision for us to, for us to look at.
I do have a, a, a question, um, Mr. Jordan, you know that, um, I will be stepping off the school board in June. But I do.
July.
July?
We don't let you go till June thirtieth.
Okay.
One more month.
So, Mr. Jordan, um, I wanted to ask, um, Mr., uh, well, perhaps you may know this. In terms of the, the funding that is given to school board members to do this work, we know that, um, many of the school boards around the state receive, uh, much more funding for this than, than our board members.
You mean, uh, compensation that school board members receive?
That would be a better term.
The stipend.
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 Yes.
Gas money.
Yes.
And so, what's unclear to me, as I step off of the board.
And don't, and don't ask anybody's vote.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm glad to serve. But what's unclear to me is that with an elected school board members, is there a state constitution that's, that indicates that the, uh, stu- the compensation should be greater than what we see here?
Yeah, we, uh, talked about, uh, that before, but, uh, Attorney Cloud, you like to remind us, because I remember last year, there's some timing in terms of who can vote on what and all of that, so.
There are a series of statutes that govern that. Uh, elected school boards can set their own salaries, but they have to be fully elected. The school board won't be i- in that state until after the elections. Their limits are set by statute as being that of the local government. So, the, the, uh, the individual school board, uh, the elected school board could potentially raise their salaries up to the level of the city council with the chairman's salary going up to the level of the mayor. However, there's a statutory process and timelines whereby that is done such that it can only be done within a certain period of time before a school board election. The idea is that then the public will have a chance, if they are upset with this elected school board, uh, increasing their salaries, to then, uh, vote at least some of the school board, uh, out of office. So, that, uh, it, it will be something that really won't be of any, uh, any effect until the, the next fiscal year after the current school, after the school board becomes fully, uh, elected.
So, that pretty much clears that up.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, the, the bottom line is, is that it's not something that this board can consider at this time. Is that correct? Correct. All right. Any, any other, um, thank you Reverend Haywood for that. Any other, uh, points for consideration? Dr. Robinson?
As far as the travel and training budget, um, I am never opposed to continuing education and improving, um, my ability to be a board member or any professional activity that I take. I just want to make sure that, uh, whatever the, we set the future school board, uh, up for is that there's a return on the investment. Many times we go to these conferences, spend all this money and, and nothing's ever done with the information. And that, to me, is a waste of money. So, I want to make sure that, that no matter what we do, is if we utilize the info, utilize the training to move the school board forward, that's, that's all well and good. Uh, the second thing is this is a very ambitious, uh, training schedule and the average person, uh, is unable to, because we're basically volunteers, unable to, um, participate at this kind of level. So, I think that has to be taken into consideration also.
Yeah. Dr. Gabriel?
Go ahead, complete.
Yeah, I think those are good points. I think we, you know, we actually have, uh, you know, a couple of years ago, I think we had six to eight trainings. And so, at this point, we really had cut back to, um, you know, we have a, had a major one in July, mid-year, in January, uh, one in April, and then, um, maybe a day in September, uh, in between. Part of what we've dealt with the last couple of years is with the weather. It has caused all kinds of, uh, disruption for us. But in terms of where we started, um, with the, I think, four to eight, uh, we definitely have, have scaled, um, some of that back. Dr. Gabriel?
If there is a conference that we would like to attend, um, or a training that we would like to attend that's not on our budget, what would, what would we, the process have to be in order to do that?
Are you saying for the entire board to attend?
No, no, no. Um, well, it would be open for the entire board to attend. No, 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 um, well, it would be open for the entire board to attend. So, if it's not listed on here, then would there be, uh, a process where we look at the funds within the travel budget? And we say, well, we have this amount left over, you can attend this conference?
Yeah, I mean, the
Are we married to these conferences?
Most, most of what you see on that list are, is tied to the
V S B A.
The school board memberships, not, not just V S B A. So, we have, uh, you know, the V S B A, we have N S B A, we're a member of Council of Great City Schools, uh, we're a member of Cube, and so many of those are tied to, to that. You know, we are encouraging our own training to, um, you know, do professional development. I know Reverend Haywood, for example, brought forward, um, there is a, was it family engagement?
Yes.
Training that, uh, conference that he went to in Richmond that he then utilized when they were working on the family engagement
Okay.
uh, policy. And I'm, I'm going to go to, um, the School Boards Association Conference, uh, I think it's in March. And two of the sessions that, that I've signed up for, one is, uh, tied to, uh, Cyber Security High School and policies and recommendations that he did that, and I chose that because of the conversations we were having. And then at the, um, V S B A Annual Convention, uh, is it Bill Doggett or Daggett? Which one is it?
Daggett.
Daggett, he spoke, so he's doing a
Innovation conference.
An all-day training on how you take many of the principles and philosophies there and integrate it into governance. So.
So, we're open for those then, if they're not specifically listed in the budget?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, our goal would be to try to factor in a professional development budget that we think is going to help move the division forward. You know, how we then, uh, utilize those funds in a way to support, you know, where the board is going and where the administration is going and where the team is going is, you know, is, is for us to determine. Ms. Bassin?
Um, I agree, they're goo- good points brought up. The one comment I'll make on the return on, on investment piece, though, is I think some of that is also up to us, and I think can be dictated by the number of board colleagues that go together to things. Because I think when, and the more of us that hear the same thing, uh, the more likely we are to implement strategies around it. So, I just want to put that out there, because I know I've certainly benefited, uh, from it and a lot of the, you know, the questions on accountability, health, whatever it may be. You know, I, I think I've brought that to the, to the table here. So, you know, I think some of that is up, up to us as to how we, how we put it forward. But I do think there's power in numbers and I, I, with, with everyone else, you know, advocate for trying to get as many, especially new board members, to go to, to some of these conferences.
Reverend Haywood, now come back to you.
I also would like to respond to Dr. Robinson's comment. I, I think he's right in saying that, um, when we can, we should, um, provide the board with materials that we have accumulated from, uh, training. But I would point out that, um, many of these trainings, um, you're not able to quite do that. For instance, I went to a training that the Brian Perkins Group did on intercultural style, um, uh, for board members, a small training. And, um, that really taught me something about relationships between board members and, um, it's difficult to bring that back to the board. But yet I think that I have gained from, um, that training experience. And so I think that, um, that we, we need to keep that in mind. And I also would agree with Ms. Bassin in saying that when board members go together, gather to these conferences, it gives an opportunity for the board members to relate to other board members together. And, uh, it's a, it's a team learning experience. And so, I, I, that's why this training is so important for us. I also might add that many of the things that we as a board, in particular us who have been together now for six or seven years, we have, um, there are things that we wouldn't go to now because we know it. You know, we've basically been exposed to that thing. And so there are hot topics that, nobody has been going to hot topics because they've already gone to many of these hot topics lately. But the new board members, all of this will be new for them. And, um, there are things that they, that they should go to.
Dr. Robinson?
To clarify, my point was, if we're going to go to these seminar, these, or, uh, uh, programs together, maybe we should have a pre-planning session to determine which programs that we want to attend. Plan out, uh, after, after-session, uh, get-togethers to sit down and share information and then have a, a debriefing afterwards. That's, that's what I meant by this. Because what happens is, we go off to these pro- programs and we end up going in different directions and we see each other at the airport on the way back. And, and now sometimes, you know, I've heard
Try to organize them.
People in the elevator saying that, you know, we, you know, we were together for this one, but there was no real organization or planning to it. My, my suggestion would make, uh, have a, have a game plan to go to it and then, um, debrief afterwards.
Any other, so I, I've heard, uh, for us to look at, uh, that portion of the budget, I'm sure there are other areas where we can, uh, look at some of the recommendations in terms of, um, uh, travel. But is there anything else at this point? If not, then I, so I can leave this, make sure we have marching orders then, then we'll, uh, get back with, uh, Ms. Banks, um, look at that area and come back with a revision for the board to consider so that we can take action and have that included in the, um, work that, that Dr. Boone and Ms. Ingram and her, and the team is, is leading. Good with that? All right, uh, next item then is actually, uh, any other matters of the board. Because of our schedule, I won't, uh, elongate it, but I actually had in this area for us to have an opportunity to talk about the professional development and trip reports from, uh, uh, P D and training and travel that board members have undertaken. You know, we can come back to that. But I did, you know, bring back, um, you know, I was at the Equity Symposium. There was a presentation on pre-K, we talked about pre-K, I brought that back. Uh, it's been some conversation about, uh, social, emotional learning and skills, uh, brought that back. And, uh, several other things in terms of legislative agenda and, and different, different items. But I'll just either scan those or download them from the app and just, just send those out and at a future time when there's an opportunity to discuss them more, we can, we can do that. Anything else for right now as far as, uh, matters of the board? I do know we need to provide some, uh, direction to, to Dr. Boone as far as next steps with the, uh, aid planning. So, we'll, we'll work on that. But, uh, uh, anything else that anyone wants to consider at this time? Dr. Boone, that you have for us, uh, before we go into closed session?
No, I don't have anything else. And again, I, I appreciate the, the conversation we've had, we just got to move it to action. At least direct. And again, I'm not wedded to any particular of the options. That's why the December conversation was so valuable to us, so we would know what would be some next steps that we need to follow. We just want to be able to be as responsive to the board as possible and also have it very clear for the community to understand what's going on. And, um, so, that's where we need to do, what we need to do.
Ms. Doyle?
Well, and I'll say, as a follow-on to that, is that you've done exactly what we've asked you to do, and we have asked a third party, um, formerly Dejean Richter, to be our consultant and our specialist to provide the best recommendations that are available, and they did. And then we said, let's move on options two, three, and then tonight was the hybrid of, of two and three. So, we have to remember that we've all agreed on moving forward on C T E. We've all agreed on the educational planning moving forward, and we all agreed to the timing of it. So, it's now just looking at what are the attendance zones that will work best in implementing the C T E High School for the fall. So, I think we just need to remain very focused on that, knowing that there are experts like Dr. Boone and Tracy Richter and our own administration here that have worked very hard to come up with these good recommendations moving forward.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. You know, just, you know, Dr. Boone and I were discussing over, over the break. I think you're absolutely correct. In terms of the, the C T E and the specialty programs and all the different options that we've discussed, and then we also talked about trying to, um, enhance, uh, access to opportunities for all children and trying to do these things in a way that did not, uh, concentrate poverty to the extent that we could do that. And so, all those things, just for me, I'm just looking at all those things through that, through that lens. And at some point, we have to make a decision, as Dr. Robinson said, not that it's going to be perfect. Uh, there may be some trade-offs that we, that we have to make, but, um, you know, that's why it's tough, tough business and
Well, and I think in our industry these days, agility is key. We are never cemented in anything at any one time. The world is changing so quickly and so shall we, and we should be agile doing it. And I think this is, you know, an effort in agility, frankly.
And as often, in, when I get in conversations with folks in the community about things like this, I, you know, often say that, you know, there was a quote that a U.S. Senator once offered in his book, and he said, you, you know, you have, um, uh, principles and you have, uh, positions and you negotiate your, or preferences, you have, uh, principles and preferences. And you negotiate your preferences and you stand on your principles. So, with that, uh, anything else?
You need a motion?
To go into closed session? Yeah. I will.
Send that quote back to D.C.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we go into close.
Well, just one, one real quick thing, uh, since Dr. Boone just mentioned D.C. That I will share from, uh, from the trip and visits that, uh, I did yesterday with other school board members. You know, we visited with Senator Kane and, um, you know, he has, uh, extreme focus on, uh, working to help advance C T E Perkins and the things that we talked about. And then I had a good conversation with Congressman Scott Staff, and they shared a lot about, uh, his work and effort around, uh, ESA and ESA planning and also his commitment to, um, uh, C T E and also, um, infrastructure support for schools. So, there's a, a piece of legis- legislation that he's put forward to, uh, work on addressing a federal response to, uh, school construction, technology, and infrastructure needs. And so his staff is going to share that with us, and since we get it, I'll share it with the board because it may be something that, you know, I think we need to review and look at because I think it ties in with all the educational planning and facilities and infrastructure needs that, that we have. So, as soon as I get that, we'll share that as well.
Well, and I just learned this week also that I guess the General Assembly is considering legislation regarding historic tax credits for schools in Virginia. So, I asked our, uh, colleagues to advance the strategies to look into that legislation.
Did you say historic tax credits?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so, uh, do I have a motion for us to enter into, uh, closed session?
I move that we enter into closed session.
Have a second?
Second?
Ms. Banks, if you would read it, the motion, please?
It has been moved that the members of the school board and council go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for the discussion or consideration of the appointment and resignation of specific employees and the superintendent's contract pursuant to subsection one of the above-sided code section and for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections seven and eight of the above-sided code section. The substance of this section of the motion refers to the advice of counsel regarding the matter set out in subsection A of this motion, two, the school board's relation to the Norfolk Education Foundation, and three, an incident involving Norfolk Public Schools employees, a student, and a parent requiring the discussion of information contained in a scholastic record and information contained in personnel records pursuant respectively to subsections two and one of the above-sided code section. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.